Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. It is Monday, February 27th, 2012, 6:01 PM. All board members are present. I'd like to say welcome to everyone. Thank you for attending. We will start this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So am I.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor then of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone vote no? Okay, agenda is approved. Okay, to begin, we have a recognition section, and we have a number of different recognitions to give out. If you all would please, everyone stay until all of the recognitions are given. We have Terrific Tigers as well as several staff recognitions. After that whole section, we will allow for a minute if some folks with kids need to depart. You certainly may during that time, quickly. But if you would, as I said, please, please stick around until all awards are given. We'd appreciate that. Thank you. First, we have Terrific Tigers. Dr. Welker?
Well, it's time to recognize our February Terrific Tigers, students that have been selected from each building based on their service to others, leadership, and scholarship. We also want to recognize their parents for all that they do. So as we call each student forward, if the parents would stand at their place, we'd like to recognize them as well.
Being recognized first this evening by Alma Schrader Elementary, Daisy Lieber, first grade, daughter of Kimberly Cavey. Being recognized by Blanchard Elementary, Dylan Jordan, fourth grade, son of Cassie Jordan. Dylan's work ethic is[156.56][156.56](applause). Dylan's work ethic is over-the-top amazing. He studies hard for his tests and is completely focused during the tests. He checks his work several times to make sure he has the best answers. He never gives in to peer pressure. He says and does what is right and kind, even if it is not what everyone else in class is doing. Dylan is a true friend to everyone who knows him.[180.12][180.12](applause)
I know he's here.
It is.
Can we just step up here just for a second and go on to the next one?
From Clifford Elementary School, J.T. Hagerty, fourth grade, son of Angie and John Hagerty. J.T. is a perfect example of a student who is safe, respectful, and responsible. J.T. is polite, helpful, and has a cheerful disposition. You can always count on J.T. to help out in the classroom, to be responsible, and to be accountable. J.T. is a class leader.[217.48][217.48](applause)
Where's that smile?
There it is. One more time.
Being recognized by Franklin Elementary is Amber Porter, fourth grade, daughter of Cassandra and Robert Porter. Amber is a model student with good behavior and is respectful to other students and staff. She offers her assistance to help and always has her homework turned in on time. Amber is self-motivated, works hard to improve her grades, and does her best in everything she does.[263.02][263.02](applause)
There you go.
Can you pull that up in front of me here so I can see your name? Good. How about a smile? One more time. Thank you.
Being recognized by Jefferson Elementary is Dakota Cooper, pre-kindergarten, daughter of Tammy and Richard Cooper. Dakota is a kind, sweet preschooler. She always helps others and is an incredibly bright student. Dakota is a real joy to have in class.[307.12][307.12](applause)
Where's that Dakota smile? There it is. One more time.
In Central Middle School, our student this month is Zachary Pullen, fifth grade, grandson of Sharon and Freddie Pullen. Zach has demonstrated what it takes to be a terrific tiger by following directions the first time, turning in his homework on time, listening when others are talking, contributing to class discussions, and showing respect for himself, other students, teachers, and school property. His good behavior is consistent, and he always does his best. Great job, Zach.[368.74][368.74](applause) From Central Junior High, Nia Johnson, seventh grade, daughter of Monique and Derek Johnson. Nia is an excellent student and is nice to everyone. She is well-liked and is a wonderful role model and a leader in the classroom. She is also very polite, well-mannered, and respectful, and always strives to do excellent work. She is serious about her work and is just all-around wonderful.[400.31][400.31](applause)
One more time.
Being recognized by Central High School is Jeffrey Pettit, twelfth grade, son of Lori and Mark Pettit. Jeffrey is very well-adjusted and a mild-mannered gentleman. His calm personality blends well with his approach to school. He has taken the highest level of courses available at Central. Jeffrey is also an exceptional musician and has played a vital leadership role in orchestra, marching band, and concert band. Jeffrey will most certainly gain success in whatever he decides to do in life.[441.02][441.02](applause) And being recognized by the Alternative Education Center is Dominique Dean, eleventh grade, daughter of Kisa Howard. Dominique exhibits a cooperative attitude, a dedication to completing her education, and a desire to further herself by attending college following her high school graduation. Dominique is very conscientious with her schoolwork. She is kind to everyone, and she always follows through. Dominique is a great example of a terrific tiger.[476.49][476.49](applause)
Let's line you all up for one group picture. So you want to put some of the tongue on the back? Does that work?
That works.
Stand right next to her. No, we'll make this work. Can you move that way just a little bit? That's good. That's good. We got everybody. Y'all put your Yeah, that looks good. Okay. Let's take it on the count of one, okay? No, how about three? All set. Smile. One, two, three. One more time. Dakota, smile. I see it. Put it down just a little bit, Dakota. That's good. All set on three. One, two, three. Last one. Two, three. Thanks, guys.[522.12][522.12](applause)
We have a couple of staff that we would like to recognize this evening. Ms. Ruth Ann Orr, Principal of Alma Schrader Elementary, has been selected to receive the Heart of Art Appreciation Award from the Missouri Art Education Association. This award is in recognition for the outstanding support that she has exhibited toward the arts. Presentation will take place of the award March 24th at the convention at St. Charles.[587.32][587.32](applause)
Little bit higher. There you go. Smile. Smile, you guys. Here we are. One more time.[597.41][597.41](applause)
The other recognition goes to Jamie Jones, the parent liaison.[627.79][627.79](applause) Jamie is the parent liaison at Jefferson Elementary, recently featured on KFES 12's Heartland Heroes Program. Jones was presented the award at a school assembly. Several staff members nominated Ms. Jones for the award. Again, we congratulate Jamie Jones for the Heartland, KFES Heartland Hero.[657.29][657.29](applause)
Smile again. One more time. Thanks, guys.
That concludes our recognitions. If anyone would like to leave, thank you for coming, Okay. Next, on the agenda, we have information, proposals, or comments from the audience. First, we have a construction update from McCarthy by Mr. Jim Fisher.
I'm here tonight to report to the board that the construction program is progressing as planned and is on schedule. At Franklin Elementary School, the building enclosure at the classroom addition is nearing completion with the brick is complete, the EIFS is complete, and the aluminum windows are being installed. At the lobby area, the roof is being installed. The cupola will be set this week, and the elevator will start to be installed also this week. At the cafeteria kitchen and stage area, the interior roughens are progressing, and finished work will start in that area. Also, in the classroom, the drywall is 95% complete. Painting is underway. We expect to start acoustical ceilings and casework during the month of March. At the Central Junior High School library addition, the structural steel is complete. The exterior framing and sheathing is nearing completion and will be complete in March. The roof is scheduled to start next month, and we should start some mechanical, electrical, and plumbing overhead roughens in March. At the middle school, foundations are complete. The CMU at the addition is currently underway and to be followed by steel joists and roof decked and roofing in the month of March. Out at the high school, the classroom addition, exterior masonry has started on the west, on the building. Roofing is installed. On the interior, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, roughens of ductwork, fire protection, plumbing, and HVAC piping are underway. We, the interior walls are nearly roughed in, and we anticipate starting drywall in March. The new chiller has been started up and is handling the air conditioning load at the high school currently. At the performing arts building, the footings and foundations are 75% complete. CMU at the toilet room areas are underway. The orchestra pit, footings and foundation walls are 95% complete. We have started waterproofing the orchestra pit foundation walls and backfilling. Structural steel has started at the connecting corridor and will continue in March. As far as the district-wide systems, the temperature control system at the high school, we're finishing up the hookup of the equipment. We're about 95% complete. That equipment is reporting on the web. The access control and security is complete at the junior high school and middle school, and they are working on programming and installing the head and equipment. The temperature control installations will be starting at the middle school in March. Thank you, and if you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Next, we have had three requests to comment on the dress code proposal, which will be discussed tonight. These three individuals have signed up at least 24 hours in advance per board policy, and so they are the only three that will be allowed to speak on this issue tonight, aside from, of course, the board when we discuss it later. In order of sign up, we will first have Mr. Eric Redinger. And I would like to just remind everybody, the three of you, that you have three minutes for total comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, everybody calls me Red, but my name is Eric Redinger. I'm the husband of Jennifer there and the father of Brennan and Peyton. Brennan is in high school and Peyton's in elementary school at Alma Schrader, so congratulations, Ms. Orr. I'm also a member of the Dress Code Enforcement Committee, which is not the dress code policy that they're voting on tonight. What they're voting on tonight is uniforms. So please, if I say dress code, I mean normal clothing worn appropriately. If I say uniforms, I mean the actual strict uniforms. Our purpose with dress code enforcement is to use the clothing the children already own and wear them appropriately, and our purpose is to clearly define and enhance the current Board of Education student dress code so our educators can easily and fairly enforce it district-wide without resorting to uniforms. We base this on the current Board of Education dress code, which I won't read the whole thing. There's not much to it really, but the first paragraph is, "The Board of Education recognizes the value of allowing individual student expression, as well as the necessity of protecting student health and safety and maintaining an atmosphere conducive to education. Student dress code procedures must be designed with the goal of balancing these competing interests." So what we did was we used a minimum coverage model, which that's circulating throughout the audience. It shows a body that's clothed, front and back, and it shows that you can wear more clothing than that, but that's the bare minimum. You have to cover the torso. You have to cover the undergarments. That would solve all these problems that we're hearing about without being, without being an expensive solution. And it stays true to the actual dress code policy, the Board of Education, that says we have to value allowing individual student expression at the same time. In regards to the uniform proposal that's being on voted, that's being voted on tonight, we feel it is far too strict. It's so strict, in fact, that cargo shorts, khaki-colored cargo shorts, wouldn't be allowed. They'd have to be an actual pleated old man's short. In fact, it's so strict that what I'm wearing wouldn't be allowed. My slacks are green, and for some reason, green's not a color that's on there. My shirt is striped. You have, you can't, so what I'm wearing would not be allowed. That's how strict this is. "The Uniform Committee has come up with their plan that meets their wants only, without regard for parent and student input, without regard for parent and students' needs. Please do not let the wants of the few be overheard over the needs of the many. We recently experienced a significant hike to our water bill. Ameren is pushing for a 14.6% increase in energy right now, and this situation with Iran will likely lead to $5 per gallon of gasoline. This is terrible timing to be asking us to spend a minimum of $335 per child to clothe our children in uniforms. I implore you, vote no on uniforms." A no vote on uniforms gives us a chance to come together, to form a real committee with everybody, and to accept more parent input. A vote no on uniforms gets us a chance at a viable, workable solution. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Redinger.[1234.83][1234.83](applause) Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Sheila Long.
Hi, I'm Sheila Long. I'd like to thank you guys for allowing me to speak. On behalf of the uniform policy, my proposal is to allow the Cape Girardeau School District students to wear plain blue jeans with no logos on them, and to change the school personnel and faculty to match that of the students. And I feel that if you guys are going to vote for the students to wear the uniforms, then your faculty and staff should also address it and wear them as well. Also, to allow these blue jeans to be worn to school, that is plain four-pocket blue jeans and khaki pants, the problem is that blue jeans are made of thicker material than khakis. When the weather here is 15 to 17 degrees, those khaki pants are too thin for these children to be wearing. The information that the Dress Code Committee presented doesn't give research-based decisions on why students should not wear jeans. It's strictly their opinion. Also, I would like to demonstrate with my children as well as my other babies, if you would just walk around, to see this is a normal polo shirt, plain blue jeans, no rips, no tears, no lowriders, no skintights. So everybody can see. By changing the dress code of the students, if you guys choose to vote that, and also of the faculty and staff, it will also help to resemble the environment and commitment of your faculty and staff, as well as the parents and the students. It would be a great exercise if you guys do choose on your own decision to vote, to have uniforms, that everyone is in unity and it shows the commitment. So I'm here to implore you that if you do decide to vote for uniforms, allow the children to wear jeans. It is too cold for these kids to be wearing those thin clothes, standing out there at the bus stop in the morning, in the afternoon, and by law, they have to go outside every day. It is too cold. So allow them to wear jeans as well. While there's currently a dress code, it doesn't mention anything about the students not wearing jeans, and the faculty and staff also not wearing jeans, or either polo shirts to match those of the children. We need a dress code that allows a choice of blue jeans that are plain, no logos, rips, tears, lowriding, or skintight. By adding this language to the dress code of the faculty and staff and students, it will show unity, pride, and our faculty and staff will work together with this new change that's proposed for 2012, 2013 school year. By allowing blue jeans to be worn, it will resemble that students will have a positive impact in the community and alleviate some of the tension that the parents are having with this dress code proposal. You also received an enclosure of the Scott County Dress Code. It was passed out to you guys, which they allow blue jeans to be worn. If you turn to the second page, I'm just gonna read one of this short, or insert, "Khaki, black, or blue denims is permitted with no holes on embellishments in it." And by allowing our students to wear blue jeans and to have the faculty and staff to dress accordingly, it would help to show that unity, that commitment, and that pride. There is no I in team. We all need to work together, and if it's not wrote down, it didn't happen. So we need to realize that if we want these children to do this, the parents to go out and spend this money, then we have to make force and effort as well to come to some type of consensus. Thank you.
Thank you.[1462.91][1462.91](applause) And thank you, kids. Lastly, we have Ms. Becky Harding.
Well, I'm kind of coming from a whole different perspective. I've been in parochial schools, and my children have worn uniforms, and now they're in public schools, and they don't wear uniforms. Uniforms were a good thing. They were a great thing. We, as far as cost goes, they had a lot of really neat programs at the parochial school where you could turn in your uniforms at the end of the year. They would have garage sale giveaways for the uniforms. As far as my children go, as far as wanting to wear the uniforms, once they got used to it, it was easy. They just rolled out of bed and put on their uniforms. I did talk to one of my really good friends from North Carolina. Her school has had uniforms for years, and they said that the hardest thing was, was the change. Change was hard. But once the school district adopted the change, that, you know, they did not know any different, and it really helped as far as how children looked at other children. It helped as far as the bullying goes. You know, we come to school to learn, and it was a good thing. As far as the lady that was talking about the blue jeans, some of the khakis, and I do understand what she's saying about the blue jeans, you know, they're thick, but some of the khakis that they have now are just as thick as blue jeans. And like I said, the other, the other thing that I talked to one of my friends that was a superintendent for years, and he said that it's, that everything he had read, that was, it was only, you know, positive things. And when we, in fact, we had a long discussion at my work about it, and if anybody's ever gone to a school with uniforms, they're just, you know, they're there to learn, and it, and everybody is kind of on the same plane. And so anyway, so I'm coming from a whole different perspective. I've had it both ways, and I prefer, once my children got used to it, they did too, the uniform, having uniforms. So.
Thank you very much.[1603.82][1603.82](applause) That is it for that section of the agenda. Next, we have informational reports, first being the Board President's Report. To the board, I'm handing you all copies of the MSBA request for submission of platform statements for the spring meeting of the MSBA Delegate Assembly held on June 15th, if any of you are at all interested. These platform statements provide the framework for MSBA's Legislative Assembly and must be submitted by March 16th. So just informational there. To the community, I wish to thank all of you who have taken the time over the past few months to give us your opinions regarding the dress code issue. An informed discussion of the possible changes to the district dress code is only possible because of the many hours of work put in by the Dress Code Committee and the administration, as well as by the input submitted by parents and students in our forums, emails, lots of emails, phone calls, and public speaking here tonight. So we appreciate that. This issue has proven to be one with many differing opinions and possibilities. I'm confident that the board's discussion tonight will take all of these differences into consideration in crafting a dress code policy that will provide a clear and concise blueprint that our students and parents will find easy to follow, and our teachers and administrators will find easy to enforce. And if not, I'm sure we will hear about it very quickly. So, thank you. That's all I have to say. Dr. Welker, you have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just have a couple of things. First off, as you know, about a week and a half ago, we had a lot of illness, particularly at the high school. Very happy to report that attendance is back up, right, Dr. Callen?
Yes, sir.
And we seem to be doing much better, and we certainly hope that everyone stays healthy and we're able to keep kids in school, but certainly understand too that there's been a lot going around. Would like to also congratulate Coach Drew Church and his, the rest of the coaching staff, and the boys' basketball team for winning the district championship. Was able to go see that game and certainly very, make us very proud, certainly wish them the very best of luck Wednesday night at Farmington, and I think they play CBC?
Yes, sir.
Okay, certainly wish them the best of luck Wednesday night. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Welker. Next, we have a report from the CTA.
I have heard.
Okay, no report this month. Next, we have the Treasury or Finance Report. Ms. Clifton.
For the month of January, we had total receipts of 18.4 million. A large percentage of that, of course, is our local tax revenues. We received a small portion of that in December and the remaining in January, though we will still see some come through with delinquent tax throughout the year. Our expenditures, total expenditures, five. Our expenditures, total expenditures, 5 million, 1.3 million of that being bond-related expenditures. Is there any specific questions in regards to the January report?
Thank you. Next, we have board reports, first being legislation and from MSBA. Mr. Menager.
For the legislation report, previously I mentioned several bills regarding changing the foundation formula, making that work for all the schools, since it's not being funded correctly, and the, changing the way that the State Board of Education can intercede more quickly in a, in a school district that's faltering. That, and a lot of things that are not really good for school districts, have been combined into House Bill 1740, that is gonna come up for debate tomorrow with the House Education Committee. And MSBA is recommending not to approve it because of all the bad things. There's all kinds of voucher credits and tax credits, and send money this way, that way, take basically money away from the school districts, and distribute for people to take to private school. So the mix of all that makes it not a good bill for education in general. Other than that, I don't have anything on legislation.
...state funding for our schools for the fiscal year beginning July 1st. Governor Nixon is calling for a slight increase in funding for the foundation formula, and flat funding for transportation and other education programs in his proposed budget. While the foundation formula remains severely underfunded, MSBA is pleased with that recommendation, since many other areas of state government are facing additional budget cuts due to a $500 million shortfall in state revenue this year. It's now up to the General Assembly to develop and approve the budget based on the governor's proposals. State Senator David Pierce of Warrensburg is the chairman of the Senate Education Committee, and he's also a member of the Senate Appropriations Committee. He tells MSBA, he thinks the legislature will approve the governor's recommendation for the coming year. But Senator Pierce says the overall underfunding of the formula is causing some distortions in the way money is distributed to school districts throughout the state. He has a bill designed to revise the formula due to the underfunding that was not envisioned when the legislature first approved it.
The formula works very well when it's fully funded. However, right now, it is not fully funded. And so what happens when there's a, not a fully funding of the formula, our hold harmless districts will actually do better than our traditionally formula districts. There's about a two-to-one ratio as far as formula districts outnumber hold harmless districts two-to-one. And so by not being fully funded when it's fully phased in on 2013, we will have a wild swing in funding, with more money going to our formula districts. So what we're trying to do is to somewhat take those wild swings away, so it'll be more of a constant funding for both formula, as well as hold harmless districts.
Pierce made his comments on MSBA's Capital Watch Program, our weekly look at legislative issues posted on the MSBA website every Friday during the session. While we spend a lot of our time on state issues facing education, we can't afford to ignore what's going on at the federal level. Efforts continue in Congress to reauthorize the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, most recently known as the No Child Left Behind Law. That reauthorization is long overdue. Tech Chapman works on federal issues for MSBA, and he says there are some positive aspects to the bill's under consideration in both the House and the Senate.
It's the elimination of AYP, elimination of the 100% proficiency standard, elimination of the highly qualified teacher standard. However, it still requires accountability for subgroups, which is a positive step. And I think, again, the allowance of the flexibility bill that will give states and local school districts the ability to use federal funds to improve education for all kids.
But Chapman says it still will be difficult to move those bills forward in an election year. He urges board members and superintendents to contact their congressional representative and our two U.S. senators about the need to make changes to the No Child Left Behind Law. A group of Missouri school board members visited Washington this month to discuss a variety of issues with our congressional delegation as part of the National School Boards Association's Federal Relations Network meeting. Well, if you haven't done so already, you'll need to adopt an employee-student communication policy by March 1st. That's a requirement of a bill passed during last year's special legislative session. That bill amended the so-called Facebook provision of a law passed last year that prohibited teachers from friending students on social networking sites. MSBA has developed a sample policy for consideration that complies with the revised law. Staff attorney Scott Summers tells us about the electronic communications section of that policy.
This section of the policy is intended to strike a balance between the reality that most students and many staff members are utilizing electronic communications in their daily lives, and they wish to use that technology in the educational process, versus the desire to ensure that students remain protected in their communications with staff. And MSBA encourages staff to utilize electronic communication in the educational process, with the knowledge that all communication should adhere to the highest standards of professional conduct.
The complete presentation on the recommended policy is now posted on the MSBA website. The MSBA policy on the issue has been sent to all member districts for consideration. Don't forget, MSBA has scheduled a number of days for visits to the Capitol during the legislative session through the School Board Advocacy Network. Check the MSBA website for the date of the S-Band visit for your region of the state. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
And, I'm sorry, is that all?
I was gonna, the aforementioned policy is part of our consent agenda for today.
Thank you. And we have a, do we have a report? Mr. McDonald from the Public School Foundation?
Not this month.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, then, we are moving to consent agenda. Consent agenda includes minutes and memoranda of previous meetings, January 19th, 2012, and January 23rd, 2012; two, the payment of bills; three, the approval of the 2012, 2013 tuition rates for Career and Technology Center; four, to accept the bid for district wired switching equipment pending the E-rate funding; five, accept the bid for wireless network equipment pending E-rate funding; six, approval of vocational technical education enhancement grant proposals; and seven, the first reading and adoption of policy GBH. Is there a motion? Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, then, of approving the consent agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. It is approved. Okay. And next, we have two business items for tonight, the first being the approval of the 2013-2014 academic calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Danica? Thank you. Any discussion? Dr. Welker, would you like to go into the calendar?
Sure. First off, I would like to note, again, that this is a 2013-14 academic calendar. We always do these two years in advance to allow adequate time for planning and scheduling of activities. Each year, we meet with the Calendar Committee, which is a subcommittee of the CTA Salary and Welfare Committee, to help work on developing a new calendar. The committee put in numerous meetings and many hours to develop two, two options or two proposals, and then they put those out to the staff in order to allow the staff to vote, so that they can have input into the calendars. Again, I would like to thank the Calendar Committee for all of their time and effort in doing this. The calendar that we have proposed, I'm not sure we have that up, but basically starts, school starts on Wednesday, August 14th. The first semester is a total of 87 days. The last day of the first semester is December 20th. The second semester starts January 6th and concludes with the last day on May 16th. Would note that, again, that both semesters are balanced in terms of the number of days, and it's one of the things we work on, is trying to get the, the two semesters balanced to make up the total of 174 days. Once you factor in all the required dates, there's really not a whole lot of variation that, that can be done, but, you know, we try to get the first semester finished before, of course, before Christmas, and then we also have to watch out, because we have a MAP testing window in April. So there's, there's some things that we kinda have to watch out for, but the, like I said, the two semesters are equally balanced. Try to answer any questions. At, down at the bottom of the calendar are the makeup days. We have to identify six additional days that will be used as makeup days. You'll note those listed at the bottom. Try to answer any questions if you have them.
I have two questions. One, I have a lot of questions from, from people wondering why we don't, no longer have a week-long spring break. Can you address that?
I, I think there's a, there's a couple of things that come into play there. I, I would say mainly it has to do with the MAP testing window. One of the things, of course, that if we have a long break right in the middle, that really messes up our, our scheduling for those tests. The other thing that does, obviously, when, when there is a long break, we lose some of the gain that we've, we've had with students, and so it takes us a while to catch back up to that point, which is, is really not very conducive in terms of, during that MAP testing window. This particular year, I think, too, that Easter occurs fairly late, and so it would, it really isn't very far between the time of Easter and the end of school. So I think, for those reasons, I think the committee decided to stay with that shorter break.
Seems like my first year here, four years ago, that was kind of one of the things we talked to the Calendar Committee about, was trying to phase that breakout, simply for, you know, for those reasons, you know, creating less of a window, you know, academically that, that it's challenging us for MAP and studies, so.
What is the, is the MAP window about three or four weeks?
I think it's, is it four weeks?
Okay. I had one other question, just looking at February. We, I know the past few years, traditionally, we've had, over the, the president's weekend, I'm, I'm looking at, at the February 2014, we have the 14th and the 17th off, the Friday and the Monday, and then the following week, there's a Monday off, instead of, I guess, as we've been traditionally tacking it on to Tuesday, making a longer, you know, single long weekend. Is there a rationale for that?
I believe it has to do with parent-teacher conferences. If you look at February 18th is, is used as a day for parent-teacher conferences, it would be somewhat difficult to have it on, we, we normally have it as, as, on two different dates, and so it'd be difficult for us to have it on a PD day where, you know, if, if they did take a long weekend, they may not be back at that point. So we always try, and parent-teacher, we did need to use that date as a parent-teacher conference, and so I think that's why they moved it to the next week.
I see. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. If not, then we will, excuse me here, really. All in favor, then, of approving the academic calendar for the 2013-2014 school year? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Motion carries. And lastly, the event of the night. The second and last business item is to adopt policy JFCA, the Student Dress Code, incorporating recommendations developed by the Cape Girardeau Public School Dress Code Committee and formatted by MSBA. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Tom? Is there a second?
Second.
Kyle? Thank you. Discussion. Dr. Welker, would you like to start?
Yes. Basically, we, we started discussing this issue way back in, early in the fall, and at that time, decided to form a committee to develop a proposal that we would bring to the board. The committee has had numerous meetings since that time. They've researched and studied the issue and developed a proposal. We had public forums, and even public board meetings, to provide additional input. The committee considered the information gathered and made several changes based on those, that input and recommendations. We've also worked closely with legal counsel from Missouri School Board Association to put the final touches to the proposal. Again, I would like to thank and commend the, the committee for their hard work and professionalism in dealing with this very controversial issue. I do, I believe that Ms. Carla Fee, who is the chairman of that committee, is, is here in terms of being able to comment or answer questions about the proposal, if, if we have questions for her.
Ms. Fee, did you wanna make a comment to, to start, or?
Thank you. Our committee would just like to reiterate that approving the dress code policy is more about creating a climate focused on learning. And as we looked, as we talked to fellow educators and, and looked at the research from schools all over the United States, every single school, every single school reported a positive improvement in their building climate, and that's what we're looking for. That's, that's where our focus is. So as you look at this tonight, we would just ask that you remember that, and we do believe that uniforms will help promote a sense of community and a sense of belonging, which will help with our academics and our discipline. And I do thank you guys for your time and, and the consideration, and, and listening to all the comments that you guys have had to listen to over the last few months. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fee.
Okay. Okay. Well, my idea was perhaps to, if, if folks have questions or, or comments or possible amendments, we can take the, take the proposal section by section. There's a better way to, to do it than speak up. I guess, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding just the, the introductory The next section, and by the way, Ms. Poynner and Ms. Hinkabine were, were going to be trying to, as we were perhaps making any changes, they were going to be able to, to do that on the screen, for us to be able to see in real time what's going on. And then that, that changed document, if it's changed, will be there for our final approval. The General Information Section has, has two items. Does anybody want, any discussion there?
One of the issues defined for us from the committee was clarity and ambiguity and those kind of things. Can you help me define proper fit? What, what's that gonna mean? How's, how's that gonna work on the enforcement side?
I don't know. Carla, do you wanna respond to the, the question, since it's from the committee, or?
I think we're within one size, one, one size, within all the sizes, so. It's, it's further down. It's, it's further down, in each section.
I think we pulled it out, put it up and talked.
Within one size?
Yes. It's under the General Information.
Does that answer your question, Paul?
What are you?
Point number two, under General Information.
And you're saying that's defined in the phrase?
I think they're saying this is defined, but your question is how do you determine?
Right. I think the only, the only, the only definition that, that I've heard, at least, is that it's just within one size. That's.
You don't see that as problematic for, for somebody who might be overweight, that might want to be two sizes larger, because it makes them feel more comfortable?
That, that was a discussion in the committee in terms, I think. That was a discussion in the committee, and it is very, very difficult to define what is too loose, and so I think they thought that what normally would be one size larger would be, that would at least give us something to go by.
This is for the board. Since we're being asked to incorporate what ordinarily would be administrative procedure into our policy to make it work, shouldn't we define that, rather than leave it open ended and bring us back to the problem that brought us here in the first place?
What's your recommendation, then?
I don't think you can define that. I think loose and baggy is a better description that falls within the parameter of discretion by the teacher who views it versus narrowing it to a proper fit.
Are you proposing changing the wording, then?
I would strike that whole sentence.
Okay. So your, your, your motion is to strike the bullet number two?
I would move to strike sentence number two under general information.
Is there a second?
Second, for the purpose of discussion.
Okay. I'm wondering, I, I think I understand your question completely, and, yeah, we've talked a lot about subjectivity, I guess that's what you're getting at. I wonder, though, if instead we use wordage, verbiage like loose or too tight or whatever, that's still, still subjective to a certain degree. I think if you, when you see a, say, a pre-K student, like the little girl that was up here before, in an adult medium T-shirt, you could recognize that that's not her proper size. Might be easier to determine when extreme situations happen. I suppose with any of this, there's going to be some discretion at the, with the principals at each building.
It would be the responsibility of the building principals to carry out the enforcement of
Right.
whatever is required.
I'm, Ms. Fee, perhaps, could you, were the principals on the committee comfortable with this wording, in terms of their ability to, you know, make determinations, or, yeah, Ms., could you come, could you come forward?
Number two.
Yes.
And we discussed that because we thought that it would make it more specific, which we wanted the process to deal with. So instead of just saying loose or baggy or too tight, we thought that was more the sort of, so, yeah, we had three principals on the committee, and they all agreed with that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I mean, I could see where that would be easy to convey to the public, to say, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, here is the parameter of clothing, needs to be within one size of a traditional fit. I mean, that at least makes it a clear-cut statement, because someone that's in a small wouldn't be wearing an extra large, or someone that's normally in a medium wouldn't be wearing an extra small. I mean, it makes it, it makes it easy to say to the parent, if there is an issue, and I guess at some point we'll get into the enforcement as well, but if there is an issue where you're sitting down saying, you know, we're conveying the problem, here's the problem, that at least makes it somewhat specific in a general way.
I mean, obviously, I understand Paul's, I understand Paul's concern, and on the other end of that spectrum, I don't suspect that we're going to have people saying, okay, you're a size six, you can only be in a size eight, I mean, a size, you know, eight or a size four. But I wouldn't venture how better to term that. I don't, I don't, I don't have a solution for that, and I think that's a yardstick. I'd be curious if anybody has a better description there. I don't know what it would be, but I see the issue on both sides.
I don't, my thought on that is you're not trying to enforce a small margin, you're trying to eliminate a large margin. Would that be correct?
We're just trying to, to make it, I guess, more, make it clear for parents, so that they know when they're buying clothes, what we're looking at. Are we going to size every student? No. But, like you said, you can tell I'm looking at the student if it's way too tight or way too baggy. So this, we thought, would be an easier way for parents to define, you know, what we're looking for when they're buying clothes.
So would it possibly be just redundant to number nine, then, under shirts and tops?
Well, I, this includes all clothing, I guess, up here.
Okay.
Including, you know, giant shoes or
I thought of that.
Clown shoes.
Clown shoes.
Right.
Except in the jungle, right?
Any other comments on that, then? All right. The amendment, then, is to strike the wording of point number two under general information. Is there a motion to approve, or, excuse me?
Yeah.
We've already done the motions. If you vote to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, were we not, you had one more point?
No, go ahead.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Please say aye.
No.
No? Okay. That amendment is not approved. Any more discussion under general information? Let's move to the shirt and top section. There are nine, nine points. I'd like to move that we amend point number one to add that turtleneck shirts are also permitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Four points of discussion.
I think we'd all agree, just if you're, if you're seconding anything, it doesn't mean you're totally in favor, just getting the discussion out there.
Did the committee talk about turtlenecks? Oh, there she, she's hiding.
She is hiding. It's early in the evening, Carla. Come on.
Just pull up a chair.
I felt like I was trying to turn that camera.
Thanks to Mr. Glass.
Turtleneck shirts, are they okay?
They were okay under a polo.
But not, you wouldn't want them just by themselves.
No, and we were going for consistency, you know, just inconsistency in the look, so.
Well, I'll tell, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I mean, and we were looking at, once we start allowing all kinds of things, then we start getting into the issue of enforcement being consistent. And so we felt that if we could keep it as simple as possible, not only would we have that uniform look, but that we would, it would also be very easy and consistent in enforcing. So we did say turtlenecks were okay under a polo.
Okay. I guess my concern about that would be if turtlenecks are allowed under certain things. For instance, in point number seven, they're allowed under sweaters or pullovers or whatever, and then the child decides to take off the outer layer. I'm trying to make, I guess I want to make sure that if there are layers involved, and then the kid sheds a layer or two, that he, he or she is still in compliance with whatever the bottom layer is.
I think we're doing that because of the different lengths of turtlenecks also. Because turtlenecks now, especially for girls, come in all different lengths, they don't, not just, like, all times. Talking about like the partial cuts.
Cowl neck.
Cowl neck. No.
I know the term.
You know, I don't remember. I just think we, we were thinking that if they had a turtleneck and a collared shirt, I guess if they wanted to take off the collared shirt, I don't think that we talked about that. You know, we did talk about collared shirts being under vests and sweaters and v-neck sweaters, and then those you could very easily take off, but we didn't talk about the turtleneck taking off a collared shirt over a turtleneck.
Yeah, I'm just, specifically, I'm looking at number seven, though, which says, you know, turtleneck is allowed, and I'm envisioning, you know, kids coming in from recess and psh, throwing off their stuff.
And if you want, you know, that could be reworded.
Well, I guess I'm suggesting that it would be.
Well, as a follow-up to that, and maybe this pertains to other things as well, but I'll just throw that out there, specifically to middle school, they aren't, they aren't changing clothes for PE. Right? Yet?
Right.
How have these issues in general, particularly these kinds of clothing restriction issues, how were they discussed and dealt with, with regard to the kids' activities in PE? Are they typically not as stringent as the other grades, or, you know, if they don't, if they're asked to go out in khakis, slacks, and
Play soccer.
You know, and play soccer or whatever, that's, I'm just asking if that was dealt with.
We talked about that, and we felt that for the lower grades, and we had a couple coaches on the committee, one specifically for elementary, that they normally bring shoes to change into, so they would have their tennis shoes, but they didn't think it was an issue, wearing, you know, khakis or navy pants and a polo shirt and doing what they normally do in PE, because they don't change now. So some, you know, a girl could wear a nice frilly little dress, and she's got tennis shoes, and she still participates in PE, so it really wouldn't make that much difference at the elementary level. We did talk about that.
Probably a lot of kids know what day PE is happening and tend to dress accordingly, hopefully.
And even, I remember the elementary coach talking a little bit, it could alleviate some of the issues when they do have girls come in dresses and they're doing certain things in PE, you don't have to worry about what's on underneath, if they're wearing, although we can wear skirts or jumpers, but one of the issues was if it was mainly pants or shorts, then you don't have an issue with being able to see under the dress.
Okay. Well, the issue is, do we allow turtlenecks or not? Any more discussion on that?
Are you talking about buttoned sleeves?
Yes.
Yeah. So the amended, the amended point, number one, would say shirts shall be collared, designed to bottom at the neck, to button at the neck, in short or long sleeve with no more than the top button remaining unfastened. Turtleneck shirts are also permitted. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Did you get that back? Okay. Anyone opposed?
No.
Two opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
I would like to further amend item number one to include spirit wear any day for any school-approved organization, team, or club. T-shirt produced by one of those and approved by the school.
Okay. So the addition would state?
Could that not go under number three?
That would not be a collared shirt. T-shirts or sweatshirts.
What?
School-oriented and approved. T-shirts and sweatshirts.
Well, sweatshirts, I guess, are already allowed, actually.
What number are you interrupting?
Number one.
Well, but they require, they require a collared shirt.
Underneath. I see. School-oriented and approved, t-shirts.
T-shirts and sweatshirts.
And sweatshirts. Hoodies or not? Non, non-hooded?
Non-hooded. What?
Well, we already have a section on spirit wear at the bottom. So would, would you just not amend that to allow for any day?
That works for me.
So do you want to address that now, or do you want to wait and address it then? Doesn't matter, we have to do eventually.
I want to do whatever's most clear, most easiest to understand.
I mean, if you want to allow spirit wear, whether it's a collared shirt or not a collared shirt, and a sweatshirt, I mean, if it has a school logo on it, or an athletic reference, then I would put it under hair.
If that is passed, you wouldn't eat number one. If you're going to let them wear them any day, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I think we need to get something on the table here before we.
Yeah, I just want to make it as concise, and if that's not the place for it, but it seems to me we're asking for an exception to the collared shirt rule, being school-sponsored. And, you know, one, we've talked about in, at great length, some of the investment we've already made in school spirit wear, the potential that it takes away future sales of those items, and also the potential to promote the school spirit among organizations, clubs, sports teams, just on a daily basis, so.
So your amendment reads to add the wording, "School-oriented and approved t-shirts and sweatshirts, non-hooded, are also permitted."
If that most clarifies the intent, if that's enough to, you know, if that's enough to do the deal, an Almer Schrader, you know, Tigers T-shirt, or a, you know, girls softball team T-shirt, or whatever it may be, if that's clear enough to do that, that's, that's my intent.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. So the amended point.
Can you read?
Yes, the amended point, then, would read, "Shirts shall be collared, designed to button at the neck, in short or long sleeve, with no more than the top button fastened, remaining unfastened. Turtleneck shirts are also permitted. School-oriented and approved t-shirts and sweatshirts, parentheses, non-hooded, are also permitted."
Or, yeah, parentheses, yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Non-hooded.
I lost it.
Okay. Just after the turtleneck part, "School-oriented and approved t-shirts and sweatshirts."
She's put that in parentheses, it doesn't need to be.
No, no parentheses in front of t-shirt. Why don't we, perhaps it'd be better to say, "And non-hooded sweatshirts." Maybe that would be, that'd be more clear. Not trying to.
Sorry.
Okay. So that has been seconded.
Would, would this not hurt those days that we, that I think principals put in, that if we, for example, we had ninety-eight percent attendance on Wednesday, the twenty-third, so next Friday, everybody will be allowed to wear a school-oriented shirt, a Tiger shirt or something like that? Would that not contradict or conflict with those days? Not, and I don't have a problem with wearing anything
Sure.
like Cape Central or Junior High or everything like that, but those days where you're trying to get the student body to do something special, and as a reward, we're going to do those days.
Well, I think they already have that ability above and beyond this, to designate other spirit days, if I understand, but one thing that comes to mind is at CMS, for kids that complete their Math Facts, you know, that they work on all year long, if they complete a certain set of Math Facts, they get this T-shirt, and at their monthly assemblies, the kids that show up that have worn those Math Fact T-shirts stand out. You know, now, again, that's a special day, but it's not Math Fact T-shirt Day, but if all those kids want to come to assembly and wear their Math Fact T-shirts, as this is written, they can't do that. So, and that's just one example.
My concern with this is that now we're saying, well, collared T-shirts or sweatshirts or T-shirts, so either go buy a collared T-shirt or go buy a sweatshirt T-shirt. I think I agree with Don, is it's eliminating the reward. I mean, if, if CMS wants to have the kids wear Math Fact T-shirts to the assembly, then they can say, hey, Math Fact kids, on this assembly, wear your T-shirt. That's, that's a reward for you all doing that, and that can be granted at the school level. My concern
Every Monday, every Monday will be Math Facts T-shirt School Day.
Well, but one of the
Yeah, if you want to wear a T-shirt, join Math Facts. You know, learn your math.
One of the other stated concepts of this whole thing was school unity, right? So if they're either in school uniform, or they're in school attire of some kind of club promoting the school every day, who cares? So if they're either in school uniform or they're in school attire of some kind of club promoting the school every day, who cares? That's, that's establishing that, and it's in good condition and it meets the guidelines of fit and of condition and no holes and whatever. Then if we got six hundred kids running around in, uh, you know, orange and black Tiger t-shirts, that's, you know, I don't see the issue with that, and that's what, you know, that's, that's one of the things I'm trying to, trying to allow.
I don't, I don't think that's a bad thing, but the, those days that we're trying, you're trying to get the student body to achieve a special, a special, uh, achievement.
Well, I'm trying to allow.
Reward for that, and I, there's nothing wrong with wearing a Tiger t-shirt a hundred and seventy-four days of the year. There's, I agree with you on that.
Don, I, I counted, I've got twenty-two school-oriented t-shirts between my two children.
So you want a special exception here for the Smea family?
No. Well, no. I, I'm, I'm sure, I'm probably not in the majority, I mean, in the minority, and probably people have a lot more than we do. And that places a lot of those clothes in inventory out there for exchange or for, you know, I mean, there's a lot my son and daughter can't wear anymore and they're sitting in my attic in a box, so.
I agree with you, I don't have a problem with them, with wearing the t-, it's just, my only thing is trying to, to, school spirit to, to wear something special on a day or something like that.
I, I understand.
It's a good.
I'm, I'm just trying to hit a lot of things in one swoop there that, that we can help the people who say, you know, we're eliminating some inventory for hand-me-downs or, you know, gently-used things or, or things we already own in our closets, and that's, that's one of them that a lot of people seem to have.
Dr. Cowan?
Yeah, I was going to ask him.
Would you, you haven't been involved in this, no, you should sit in the back row back there. What, did you, on our discussion here, do you have anything that you?
Well, I would, I would prefer not to go in that direction for the various reasons that you were indicating, Don, is we really look at it as an opportunity to create these special days. You know, the, the whole concept of a dress-down day, uh, I think is going to have a lot of appeal to our kids, uh, once we establish a big uniform, uh, policy and a uniform look. And so, we would like to have the opportunity to use that as a special reward, uh, whether it's for the canned food drive or the blood drive or whatever the case may be. I also am concerned, again, about the degree of subjectivity, uh, that's what we, uh, bat almost every single day. And so as we start moving away from what, uh, we have recommended here, we will just be inviting more difficulties as we try to interpret that, uh, with our kids. So, uh, with all due respect, uh, Tony, we want to encourage school spirit and we want to do some of those formalized school spirit days. From the very beginning, I was adamant about that hadn't happened, I didn't want to lose the jungle days and, uh, our orange and black days, certainly, uh, at the high school, uh, but, uh, for the day-to-day operation of our school, I think we will be served much more effectively if we don't go in that direction.
I have a question, how do they come about these shirts and different things that you're talking about?
From personal experience, they're offered by organizations like PTA for sale.
Booster clubs.
Or they're issued by teams, basketball, softball, whatever, club, Spanish club. That's how they, how they get them.
So if I was an inventive student, I couldn't go out and create one?
Well, it has to be school, it has to be building-approved or school-approved.
If, if the math club sponsor came to you on, uh, one week and said, can all, can we have a special day on Tuesday next week that the, all the math club students could wear their math club t-shirts on that day, would that be some kind of an exception?
Sure, absolutely, if there was something special that was taking place.
There's always this, that they've come to the building principal.
Absolutely, and I think that's one of the, um, I think cultural attributes we want to put in place so that we can make those kinds of recognitions, you know, for our kids, and we will certainly be open to doing that. In fact, would welcome, uh, that possibility to be able to do that. But on the day in, day out, uh, we want to try to have that uniform look, that sense of shared identity, uh, certainly, and we certainly want to eliminate subjectivity.
Any other discussion about that? All right then, um, regarding the amendment to allow school-oriented and approved t-shirts and non-hooded sweatshirts, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Can, if you say aye, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Four, uh, all opposed, please say no.
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 Motion, uh, the amendment is approved, four to three. To a smattering of applause.
Off clean.
All right. More thoughts in the shirts?
I would like to see number three. Visible logos or graphics are prohibited unless it is a district-approved logo or graphic. Feel if they're wearing a s- a solid color shirt, they, it doesn't matter if it has a logo on it or not, as long as it is within.
Are you pre- proposing a, an amendment?
To, to strike.
To strike? Strike the whole thing?
Well, we already have, we just added colored shirts and.
I'm, I'm not, all right.
It's, it's the whole logo thing that I've got an issue with.
Okay, so what are you, what are you proposing?
I guess strike the whole.
Number three.
What's the motion?
Strike number three.
Motion is to strike number three. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Paul.
I would, uh, move to amend that to.
We have to vote on the proposal first, right?
No.
No.
Okay. No, because it changes the original one, so.
I would, uh, move that we, uh, add back, um, the language to state that district-approved CGPS logos or graphics are permitted, and brand-name logos are permitted if they are smaller than a quarter. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion there? So.
Could you explain that?
Yes, um, I guess I'm, I'm envisioning, um.
Giant.
Polo, polo-style shirts that might have, uh, a school symbol, a tiger paw, whatever, like you have on your shirt. But also, um, to allow, uh, polo-style shirts, um, that you can buy at Walmart or American Eagle or wherever, that also might have a small logo.
But no larger than?
I, I, I'm suggesting smaller than a quarter because I think that probably encompasses most. Some shirts have logos that cover their whole shirt, um, and I think that's against what, what is, uh, being promoted by the committee. Any discussion?
Most golf shirts are going to have logos bigger than a quarter though.
Yeah.
I, I'm not.
Creek, Bank of Missouri, I mean, any.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I guess I.
I mean, within reason, I see your point, but.
Yeah, and I don't know how to, I mean, obviously, you all.
I mean, I don't see a whole lot of polo shirts that have logos across them.
Oh, I do.
Oh, there are, Ralph Lauren makes them.
Yeah, there's Ralph Lauren shirts with.
Oh, yeah, there's huge.
It has the big horse on it now.
My son has a t-shirt that has a logo on it that covers the entire front, it's, it's the store logo, but it's just a big giant thing. And, um, I don't, I wouldn't favor, be favor that if it's not the.
I would think that's why the committee.
So that's what I'm thinking. I picked a quarter because I, I, I've seen that language before, I, I think it covers a lot. Um, I wouldn't try to, I, I can't imagine that principals would, I, I think there'd be some common sense involved with.
I, I was meeting with Dr. Walker one day and I had on an orange polo shirt, and he said, well, we were discussing the, the policy in, in, in specific terms and, you know, he made the comments, well, you're in uniform today. But on my sleeve, I had a little umbrella that was embroidered on there, very small, same color as the shirt, which wouldn't be allowed under this policy, which makes no sense, you know, that, you know, I bought that shirt for ten bucks at, I don't even remember where, you know, um. And, and again, I think within reason, if, and I understand eliminating graphics and slogans, you know, if we have somebody go out and buy an orange polo shirt and then put, you know, "School sucks" on it, then, you know, that's a problem, so we've got to figure out a way to deal with that. But if they go out and they buy something from Wrangler and it's got a little Wrangler logo on the sleeve, I think eliminating that's kind of, that's harmful for the public, they can't, you know, it really restricts their choices, so.
Could there be some wording in there unless it is the brand, uh, logo of the brand?
Well, I think that's what she proposed.
I said, brand name logos.
Brand name, okay.
But at the same token, you know, you know, having a six-inch or eight-inch design logo, I think, so, you know, where's the line, where do you?
I've seen shirts, you know, like Nike golf shirts that have Nike covering the whole, you know, the word Nike going down the whole shirt, and, and I guess I'm, I don't think that's what we're going for.
The problem I have with a lot of this is that, and I know Carla has said this on numerous occasions, when we start tweaking things like this, the comment you just made was, well, I would hope someone would have common sense, well, as soon as you put that in there, that just opens it up for all kinds of interpretation, because now you're saying, okay, this person's common sense is different than this person's common sense, and this teacher or this principal may not like this because of this, well, you're just creating a whole different set of issues. And I think that's what Dr. Cowan just said, and I think that's what Carla and the rest of the committee have been trying to say, is they want something that's easy to enforce, that's not open for interpretation, they want something that's.
By that same token, though, you're, you wanted to eliminate the language that says all logos and graphics are prohibited, so you're, you want anything allowed. So that's, that seems more, much more subjective than what I'm proposing.
The, the biggest thing behind allowing the logos is exactly what Tony said, and allow, you know, the children that came up here, two of the four of them had logos on their, their shirts.
Right.
And they, one of them was bigger than a quarter, so are you going to send her home because she came to school dressed like that?
I, I don't think any, i- if it's.
You don't think, but there's no, I mean, as soon as you start saying that, it opens up interpretation issues. And that's what Paul was trying to say earlier with the, the proper fit thing, when you start allowing for interpretation, you open up there's a whole different set of problems, so we're going from one set of issues where you have no enforcement or very little enforcement because it's so subjective, to this super strict, but now we're tweaking it thing, you're, you're sliding back to what they're trying to get away from.
I think, though, the difference between what you're proposing and what I'm proposing is that I'm suggesting, um, that a smallish logo is okay. You're suggesting, though, that any message that a kid wants to wear on their shirt is also okay.
No.
But that's what's going to happen.
We haven't got to that point yet.
But that, but that's what, that's what you're, that's what you're saying, by, by removing all that language, um.
No, we're talking logos, we're not talking slogans, we're not talking sayings, we're not talking.
Well.
Advertisement, we're.
Well, you, but to, to use your point, one person's logo is another person's slogan, I mean.
Like Tony said.
Who makes that choice?
If you put, if you put "School sucks" on there, that's an issue, but if it's a little horse that might be bigger than a quarter.
But if we allow anything, we have to allow the "School sucks" entrepreneur to.
No, it comes under separate policy.
No?
No.
Yes. All this legal info, all this legal talk that we have been given about court cases that have happened around the country, state that when children are disciplined for something that's on their shirt that the principal doesn't like, the district loses. Because if you allow one thing, one message, one slogan, one, whatever, you have to allow it all. So, one point I'm hearing from the committee is that they want all that removed because it protects the district, for one thing. Um, you, the district has to prove a huge amount of, of, uh, disruption has been, has been caused by some kid's NRA t-shirt or gay rights t-shirt or, you know, whatever t-shirt. And, and usually, they can't, and, and districts are losing those, those battles. And it's costing districts money. So, I, I'm, for that reason, I'm very much in favor of removing, um, messages, slogans, what have you, from, from clothing, and I, I think this language does it. If you can put a big nasty slogan, you know, smaller than a quarter, then maybe we'll have a discussion, but.
Well, but you say makers, makers' labels, right?
Right, I'm saying brand-name logos, which I think makes sense to a lot of people, if you can, it's a Walmart brand or it's a polo brand or it's, you know, I think that's common sense language. I don't think we have to remove the term "common sense" because I, I think there are plenty of common sense people still around that can make decisions.
What you, you mentioned, thinking about my shirts, I think I only, I have, the only shirt I have today that has an embroidered thing, but it doesn't have a logo on it, all my others have a logo. Some of them are small and they're hard to find sometimes. I'm concerned what kind of burden we put on people that are clothing their kids, that if we eliminate all logos, that you can't have any kind of logo, that's really going to curtail their ability to find clothing. The only company I can think of is LL Bean sells a shirt without any kind of logo. All the others, Bauer, and you go to Kohl's, whatever their manufacturer is there, so. We have to have something there, you're talking about a quarter, but then I think about Wrangler, theirs is linear, it's not going to be a quarter.
Oh, on the pants?
Well, on shirts too.
That's what I'm wearing.
Let's, we'll talk about pants.
Did you model it for us, Tony, so you can turn around? I got a quarter.
Well, I'm certainly, I mean, I'm not going to die on the sword about the quarter size thing, I'm just trying to suggest a smallish kind of thing. If, if, if people feel more comfortable with the language of three inches or two inches or, you know, to accommodate what you've got on, I, I, I don't think that's at all, um, what we're trying to ban, what you, you know, your shirt.
Like the kids who were out front there a long ago. I think probably that's, it's hard too if you, uh, we consider the people that go to the thrift stores to go through and find nonlogo stuff, so allowing some sort of logo, I think is, uh, you're going to have to be there to accommodate the, the people that come to school. And I, I'm trying to think, it seems like the polo logo has gotten larger, hasn't it?
They have a small and a large, I mean, you know, you could have one with a horse that's.
The regular ones about the side.
A third, yeah, but they have the shirts that the horse is, you know, that big.
So, I don't know, my thought about the quarter was that, you know, in, in, in a majority of things that I've just seen, that would accommodate that. I, 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 I don't, I wouldn't suspect that principals would be running around with a ruler or a, a quarter, I, I, I mean, Carla would. Any other discussion then about that? The amended point then reads that district-approved.
Do you?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to maybe amend that size just a little bit?
Do you?
I would propose that we amend it maybe to an inch and a half.
Inch and a half.
I mean, clearly.
But how you police it, that's my question, I mean.
Or an inch and a half or smaller.
Okay, the amendment then reads.
I'm just looking for, you know, if you've got a Nike dry-fit polo, I think that little Nike symbol is probably less than an inch and a half. And that's kind of on the bigger end of something reasonable, I think.
Okay, the, the motion then is to amend the amended amendment to, um, to state that brand-name logos are permitted if they are smaller than an inch and a half.
If they are an inch and a half or smaller, whatever.
If they are an inch and a half or smaller. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion about that?
Okay.
Hang on a minute.
I, I have, I have a, I have a question because as we start getting to amend the amendment to the amendment to the amendment, amending it and then go to the next one and amend it, what, what would keep someone from going out and buying a Nike dry-fit t-shirt? Billy, his neighbor, has a cool embroidered logo, going to Specialized over in Jackson where they do a lot of logos, saying, "I want this logo, put a logo on a Nike dry-fit t-shirt," and showing up at school.
It's not a brand-name logo.
Is it, this, as it states, now. Is it, this, as it states now, uh, district approved CGPS logo or graphics are allowed. Brand name logos are permitted if they are an inch and a half or smaller. So...
So, what I'm saying is I can go out and buy the T-shirts my kid likes, take them and get...
A collared shirt.
No, T-shirt.
Oh, oh, oh.
We've already went to T-shirts now.
School-oriented or approved.
One that you've...
Yeah, spirit wear. We're gonna go out and put a tiger paw on a shirt, and he's gonna wander the halls, and Carla, or anyone else, is supposed to be able to look at that shirt and know that it wasn't bought through ABC Club, X.Y.Z. Club, you know, Stand Out Back Club, whatever. I'm just saying, as we keep amending these things, we're gonna be to the point that it's like, we're, we're not gonna have anything that can even be enforced. If we're gonna do that, let's scrap the whole thing. Go with this saying, "Don't cover up, don't leave anything uncovered." And at least it's something that they can say, "Oh, I see skin past here." I'm, I'm just saying, by the time we get done, we, we've been talking about this for forty minutes, and we're to subtopic two, item three.
You got someplace to be tonight?
No, I don't have any. I can be here till three o'clock in the morning. I'm just saying, by the time we get done amending this thing, it's gonna be a nightmare for the teachers to try and enforce. I mean, now I'm walking around with a quarter.
You know what the point is.
I, I'm suggesting people can use some common sense.
Well, obviously, they can't.
Apparently, they can't.
Well, hold on. Let, let's be clear. The policy we have now says basically nothing. It is not enforceable, according to our teachers and administration.
But what I'm saying is by the time we get having, done having an eighteen-page document, it's not gonna be able to be enforced either.
Are you sure? Because already, we have stated that shirts need to be collared, they need to be buttoned.
Unless it's got a central logo on it, and then it can be a T-shirt.
Yeah.
Or it can be a turtleneck.
Do, do you not believe that's better than the, um, T-shirts with the whole sides cut out and the...
But I'm saying, it can be readdressed by just saying, "Have clothing covering this part of the body." Whether it has a big Nike swish down the middle of the T-shirt, I mean, once you get to that point, I'm just saying, by the time we get done amending this a hundred times, it, you're, you're gonna have something that's gonna be difficult to enforce. You're gonna be watching a hundred different things.
I haven't seen that yet. I, I, all I've seen is us make attempts to make it easier for people to afford to comply.
Okay, let's just keep going. Because, I mean, once we get done, we have to vote on the whole document anyways, so, okay, let's go on.
He does bring up a good point. If...
Well, you're making...
Go, go through all of this, and we don't approve it, we've done a lot of work for no reason.
Well, we can't approve it without discussing it first. This is what we approved. Decided we wanted, wait, this is what we decided we wanted to do.
I completely agree. Let's go. I'm ready.
I have a motion right now from Stacy to amend the amendment.
It's actually from Tony.
Well, no, yours never did get seconded.
Huh?
I seconded it.
Yeah. Make a second.
He did.
Your, your motion to, for the one and a half inch, was it ever seconded by Paul?
I never thought that Stacy's got seconded.
Yeah, by Tony.
And then we had discussion on that, and then I amended it after.
It was never fully worded out. I thought we were working on the wording on it.
No.
No, there was that, there was...
You had the wording done?
Yeah.
And I amended her. I, I requested an amendment to her wording.
We have to vote on his amendment.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
The inch and a half.
Right.
I'll start it off.
Cut-out logos?
No, cut out the number three.
You're going into the shirt-making business, aren't you, buddy?
So the...
No, this is a print.
Um... District approved.
I think it should be "or" instead of "and," otherwise it looks like the CGPS logo has to be...
Uh, I, I think what I stated was, "District approved CGPS logos or graphics are allowed." Period. Next sentence, "Brand name logos are permitted if they are an inch and a half or smaller." That is the proposed amendment.
That is the brand of the shirt.
Brand name logo.
No, Coke. You can't have a Coke logo on it.
I, I, I was, I was thinking...
Clothing brand name.
Okay, yeah. Yes, that's what I, that was my intent.
Do we need to insert the word clothing to make it clearer?
Um, I...
Okay with me. It's my amendment.
Okay. Clothing, brand name, logos are permitted if they are smaller, if they are an inch and a half or smaller.
Somebody can make their own.
You need to put clothing in front of brand.
Isn't that what you just said?
Yes.
Brand name.
Clothing, clothing, brand name.
Brand name clothing logos.
Brand name clothing, okay.
Okay. So has that been seconded? I'm sorry.
By Paul.
By Paul, okay. Any more discussion, then, about what that states? Okay.
So you're, you're voting on basically Tony's amendment?
Yes.
The wording right up there.
And we will. Well, I'll get to that in a second. Um, all right. All in favor, then, of the amended point, number three, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, seven in favor. Okay.
Can I make a suggestion while we're doing this?
The amendment carries. Yes.
If there's, if someone wants to do something to a number on here, can we just make one motion and then agree on how we wanna change it? We're not trying to do his emotion, and his motion, and his amendment.
Well, if you wanna ditch parliamentary procedure...
It's fine with me. In, in theory, you just voted on his without even voting on...
Well, you get to yours.
Well, we're coming back. We, we have to work backwards now.
What you just voted on, I struck it, you changed it, he changed it, you just voted on his, so you just voted on all three changes. So basically, what you did is exactly what's up there. You lined it out, and you changed two sentences.
That's how it works.
We vote to strike. We remove the thing we just did.
Have you ever voted on just one part?
Well, um, you made a proposal. I voted to change it, and...
That's why I'm asking.
No, no, no. My, my, I, I, from what I understand, um, the process is that if, if I hadn't had support, it would've...
Now, at this point, at this point, they vote on, you vote on Stacy's amendment. If it fails, then we're back to yours. Original one. I mean, that's just the way it, it works. At this point...
I'm, I'm just trying to make it easy for Beth, 'cause Beth's over there trying to juggle three, three different things at one time.
But we need to follow procedures.
Well, when you go out on a branch, you gotta come back to branch.
Right. And so, at this point, at this point, you're back to your amendment as amended.
The original one?
Your, 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 buddy.
Huh?
Okay.
Hey, I went to that training at, uh, Tantara. That's what I got from it. Go out on a branch, come back.
So going back, back, then, the, the amendment...
What, what you, what you should've voted on just now was the, the, Tony's amendment on the one and a half inches. That's what we did.
Of just the amendment, just the amended part.
Just the amended part.
Correct.
Okay. I skipped a few steps.
That's where I was.
Gotcha. Hey, we're making sausage here, okay? I mean, this is ugly. So, but this is what we decided to do a month ago. It's gonna be awful. Um...
I like sausage.
Wow.
I like when it's done. I don't like looking at it.
So did you vote on the one and a half inches that was...
Well, I, I made a mistake in, in, uh...
No, we just voted on...
Can we get that in writing?
Uh, I said, "For the record, for perpetuity."
Another one.
Um...
You need to keep the name with the amendment. So right now, you're voting on Tony's amendment.
Just the little part that he amended?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Should we, should we, can we just scratch what I just did? And, okay. All right. The amendment, then, that we are, I understand now. Thank you. Uh, the amendment we should be voting on, then, is to strike the words, uh, "smaller than, smaller than a quarter," and add the words "one and a half inches or smaller." Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor, then, of that amendment, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Amendment carries? Okay. I'm, I'm back on track now, Jim. Thank you. Um, the amendment, then, uh, reads, um... Adding the words, "District approved CGPS logos or graphics are allowed. Brand name clothing logos are permitted if the logo is an inch and a half or smaller." Any more discussion there? All in favor, then, of that amendment, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That amendment carries. So, then, in rea, well, then how do we get to the...
I have to vote on what I initially...
To strike it completely. Well, no, because if his amendment now has been changed, that essentially, you're gonna vote on it again, but...
Right. We're done. I think we're done with that. Okay.
Well, technically, you oughta, I guess you oughta vote on it again, because you're down to Kyle's amendment as amended.
Okay. Um, all those in...
Which is, which is...
Why don't we just open it up and discuss each point, and amend it as the board discusses it, so that then...
Because you'll never, you'll never come to a, a resolution that way. It's almost got to be done this way.
Okay. Uh, all in favor of the, um, original amendment?
As amended.
As amended. Please say aye?
Which is what's there.
Which is what's up there. Which is what is up there. He...
No.
To strike.
Just strike.
The way it is, but since his was to strike it out...
The amended part is to add back in the wording that you see up there.
So if we vote yes for Kyle, we're removing that line altogether?
No.
No.
No, okay.
Right. He has to make that motion again if he wants to do that, right? But he can do that. Technically, you need to, you need to vote on it again.
Okay.
As amended.
As amended.
All right. All in favor, then, of approving point number three as amended? Please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? No? Okay. Amendment carries. Number four. Uh, what other, what else on shirts? I would, uh, suggest or, or move that on point number six, we strike the words "solid-colored T-shirt or turtleneck" and add the words "approved shirts."
I'm sorry, did we skip four?
I'd, well, I don't think we have, no, but I didn't hear any. Uh, we can go back to it.
Should we just ask if there are any other, under, any...
You can run into an issue with four.
Okay, we, okay. But, well, we'll go back to it. Um, regarding number six, the, the...
You will just put that on hold right now, too?
So it, at this point, we're discussing...
Can we, can we tell?
Go ahead.
Just to try to keep this a little bit simpler, can, can we just, can we stay in order? I mean...
Okay. I didn't hear any on number four, so, but I may have moved too quickly. Strike that. Uh, discussion on number four.
Okay, this is just for discussion. I'm not making a motion yet, right? We can, we can discuss since we have the motion on the floor to approve this thing. I look at tucked neatly into pants. Again, here we go with the definition of neatly. Is that really necessary? Does that serve any purpose for, the idea is to have your pant, your shirt tucked in? Neatly is one of the discretionary description things again.
Would, would you be more comfortable if the word neatly is out?
I, I'm, I'm asking, is it, does that sound like a big deal?
You need, you need to read on to make sure that you read the rest of that, too. It, it is, say, tucked neatly into pants if excessive in length or non-tailored. So it's, it's not...
I think we have a difficult time finding a boy's shirt when untucked that doesn't come past the wrist.
Especially if that boy's overweight. The length of the shirt is gonna need to be tucked into pants.
Yeah, I mean, I could untuck my shirt right now, and I guarantee you, if I stand up, it's gonna come past my wrist. No, I'm just saying. That's, that's not excessive.
But you got short arms.
I don't have short arms. I got long arms, but it's coming past my wrist. It'll come down to the middle of the palm, fingers.
Is anyone proposing a change?
I'm just saying it's difficult to find a boy's shirt if it's untucked and not come past the wrist.
And I'm just saying that we're not gonna get anything done if we don't put anything on the table, and, because we can, we can argue about these points, but if you're not making a change...
Okay, then I would say it comes to the end of the palm. And it's only a couple inches, but if you're gonna measure a kid and say, "Put your arms next to your side," their shirt's gonna come past their wrist.
So you are moving to strike the words...
I'd move to strike the word neatly.
Okay. Paul?
And...
I think even if you went to the middle of the palm, I don't know if you have to go to the end of the palm.
What, Paul, are you making another...
You want me to add that to my motion?
Yeah.
Strike neat and middle of the hand.
Paul, are you making another?
Yeah, we're just...
Fingertip.
To...
I'm just saying, it's...
Longer than the middle of the hand. How about to the knuckle line?
Yeah.
End of your palm, beginning of fingers.
There you go.
Okay.
Demonstration.
Yeah, demonstrating for us. What'd you feel?
I'm just saying.
Paul, what's, what's your, what are you trying to change here?
Uh, strike neatly and change the excessive length that is defined as longer than the wrist to, uh, mid-palm.
So strike the word wrist and add, strike the word, yeah, strike the word wrist and add...
Mid-palm.
Fingertips.
Okay, is there a second, second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? I think mid-palm is extremely confusing.
Why not just say fingertips? If it's longer than your fingertips, it's too long.
Are you proposing an amendment to the amendment?
I would second that.
Mr. Nigga would, would amend his own amendment.
I can, I can amend to fingertips.
Where does fingertips go? Fingertips on me goes almost to my knee.
Well, then you can wear a shirt almost to your knee, then.
Well, but you don't want kids walking around with shirts to their knees. I'm just saying, if it's a...
Ah. I'll shut up.
I'll second that. Ah.
Kyle, are you amending this amendment to state fingertips instead of mid-palm? Yes or no?
I think in situations like this, if, if Paul wants to amend his amendment, he can do that as long as, uh, there's no objection.
Okay. Paul, are you suggesting?
Simplify things here to amend my amendment to...
To state fingertips?
From change mid-palm to fingertips.
Okay. The amendment, then, uh, reads, uh, tucked into pants, and excessive in length is defined as being longer than the fingertips. And that's been seconded by Phil, I believe?
I seconded it.
Tony, sorry. Discussion?
I think fingertips is, I mean, it sounds stupid, but I'm just saying, now you can have kids walking around with shirts untucked to their knees.
No, to their fingertips.
But if your fingertips go to your knees, then the shirt goes to your knees.
Depends on how long their legs are.
Hands go to their knees. There's, there is no set length of your arms.
I think it'd be a gorilla.
I'm just saying, if I stand up, my fingertips are an inch above my knee.
Well, okay.
I, I was just saying that wrist is too short.
You have like a two-inch window.
Well, I guess I do. I have big hands, you know? I don't, I don't know what to say, but I'm just saying, it's difficult to find a boy's shirt that would hem at his wrist. But when you go to a fingertip, that's probably gonna be too long.
Okay. Yeah, really. Uh, any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. Hearing none, then? All in favor of the amendment as stated, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Raise your hand, please, please. Danica, did you vote?
Yeah, aye.
Aye, okay. All right. Two opposed. The amendment carries.
You don't go to your knee, stand up, pretty much.
Okay, number five. Any question there?
What if the white top is a turtleneck underneath the vest or sweater?
Then it needs to have...
Nobody's gonna know.
Well, and if the kid takes the vest off, they need to have a white undershirt or white or flesh-colored undergarment. Uh, Ms. Fee, maybe you can enlighten us. I, that, generally, the problem is the bright-colored undergarments.
Right. If they had a hot pink bra under a white shirt, that would cause quite a distraction. Sometimes we have girls that wear white pants with brightly colored undergarments. So that's what we were trying to get around. Either, either a T-shirt or, um, undergarment. Not both. I think there's been some misconception that they have to wear both. But we just said, under a white shirt, you wear a lighter flesh undergarment.
Or a T-shirt, or a white undershirt, yeah.
Which goes back to our original problem of modesty, right? If people did the right thing, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Uh, number six. I'd move to strike the words "solid-colored T-shirt or turtleneck" and add the words "approved shirts," maybe worn under-colored shirts.
Approved shirt, does that mean?
Well... Well, what, what, what is allowed under here can be worn under a tee shirt, or, excuse me, under a colored shirt.
So if a child wants to wear a purple and pink striped shirt underneath a black colored shirt, they can't do that?
We can't really discuss it until someone seconds it.
Second.
Okay. What was your question? Now I'll listen.
So if a person wants to wear a purple and pink striped shirt underneath a full-
No, that's not an approved shirt.
Well, what difference does it make? What color shirt is underneath their shirt?
Well, we've already decided it has to be solid in color, according to number two. That's how it states.
But you're talking about shirts underneath.
Yeah. That's why I'm saying approved shirts have to be-
So if I had a green, green undershirt underneath the shirt right now, that would not be allowed?
Uh-
If you don't see it, what difference does it make?
Well, I guess I'm going back to the issue of kids shedding layers, which does happen quite a bit. Well, should we put that part of the policy? Kids, no taking off layers. That'll work. I'm just trying to be all inclusive so we don't get in a problem of, uh, a kid showing up with, with a shirt on that maybe mom and dad didn't see when they walked out the door. Um, then they get to school and they have a sweater or something on, and then they decide they're hot, and they take it off, and now they're in a shirt that nobody wants them to be in. Perhaps it has a bad message, perhaps it, um, you know, all of a sudden now, everybody's wondering, hey, why does that kid get to wear the fun plaid shirt? I don't get to wear a plaid shirt. So. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to prevent problems. Crazy plaid. I'm, I'm just trying to, my only thought is, is, uh, trying to make these all work together.
Did I already second that? No, we, because we're discussing it, right?
I think we seconded it. So it has to be an approved tee shirt underneath?
Approved shirt of any sort. It could be a-
Well, no.
Turtleneck. Turtlenecks are permitted. School oriented and approv- and approved tee shirts are permitted. They've been approved up here. Uh, and so they are allowed to be worn under collared shirts.
I just wanna make sure that we're not eliminating traditional white undershirts that I wear every day underneath a collared polo.
Whether you're not gonna be taking your shirt off.
You would think.
Oh, I see.
That's what I'm trying to say.
The only thing, the only thing I didn't think about was a white undershirt.
Or a black, or, you know, I mean, that's the, that's where the problem, I mean, I, you know. Yes. Well, hey.
Cause you're either, you're either wearing a school tee shirt or a collared shirt.
But again, these problems are what are coming from getting away from just a collared shirt. If you're gonna do it, you gotta do just a collared shirt. I mean, now we've opened up eighteen other possible issues.
No, no, no. Actually, as it's, as it was originally stated, it says solid colored tee shirt or turtleneck can be worn under collared shirts. But up above, we are not allowing kid to wear a solid colored tee shirt unless it's a school shirt.
I think you can get around this by leaving it the way it is and adding four other approved shirts.
So keeping the language in.
Right.
Um, so then if a kid gets, kid, let's say a kid wears a button down shirt to school. And they have a, just, just a white undershirt.
Right.
And they decide to take the collared shirt off.
They can't take it off.
Can't take it off.
You can't take it off. If you don't have an approved shirt underneath, you can't take it off.
Then they're not, then they're not in compliance with policy and they're told to put their shirt back on.
Right.
So you're suggesting changing it to solid colored tee shirt or turtleneck or approved, or, we don't need that language at all.
You don't need that.
You don't need the language at all.
I think six is fine the way it is. You can wear a solid colored tee shirt or turtleneck under a collared shirt. There's not a problem.
And if it's a, and if it's a spirit wear shirt that we've already approved, they can wear that by themselves, but if they peel their shirt off and, and they've got their veins showing, then they gotta put their shirt back on.
But if they take off a collared shirt and they just have a solid colored tee shirt under it, they're still not in compliance.
Yeah.
They are not in compliance, correct. But if they had a spirit wear shirt under their collared shirt, they could take off their collared shirt.
Then they would do it.
So, we're not worried about what they got on underneath it as long as we don't see it.
Okay, I see. Alright, well, let's, uh, I guess we need to, can I strike that or just?
You can, you can withdraw your motion as long as they withdraw their second.
That was my second.
Yes.
Okay, fine, withdraw, withdraw.
That's ten minutes, we're not gonna get back.
Okay, so it's withdrawn.
Fine.
But we're making forward progress, Don.
Yeah, we're already at number seven.
Of the shirts.
There's only one more page.
I recall you all agreed with me to do this.
And you're doing a fine job.
No, I don't disagree at times.
No.
As long as the second in the-
As long as there's no objection.
Okay. I wanna take my jacket off, but I'm afraid to.
No, you can't.
Somebody got a ruler?
After the shirts section, I'm taking my jacket off. Okay. Um, number seven. I kinda had a question about the same, the same issue, but, but, I'm learning and now I think I won't say-
Slowly. Now you think you understand?
Anything about it.
Okay.
I do have one question, uh, for the committee. Um, when we talk about sweaters, vests, um, what have you, those can, those can look any way, they don't have to be solid colored? Was that your intent?
Well, originally, when we had the four basic colors, our intent was that they be solid in approved colors. But then we changed that, and when we made those changes, and then with the, um, changes being approved by MSBA, I don't think that was ever changed again to reflect the last changes that we made as a committee.
Mm-hmm.
When we added all the colors. But our initial thought was that they be solid in and want to be approved colors.
So no cool plaid?
Or ugly Christmas sweaters.
Well, that's not what it says right now.
It's, it's not what it said.
It's not what it ever said.
Well, it initially, at the very beginning, said only solid and green, orange, black, orange, black, gray, or- Was it?
So originally was written, you would have wore an orange and I could wear any colored sweater I wanted with it?
No, it was in orange color. It had to be the approved colors, so it could be a solid colored-
So with the change, it would have, it would have to be a solid colored?
But it doesn't state that.
No, originally, we just had the four solid colors and so.
Do we need to add solid colors?
Um, well, my, my only concern about that is that, you know, if you have a jacket, I, I, I don't think your intent was ever to, to require that jackets outerwear, you know, was-
No. No, outerwear, we didn't have any limitations on it all. What they would like, where to school if it was cold.
Right.
No, we didn't. So whatever.
But they're not to be worn in the halls.
They're not to be worn in class.
In class.
Right.
And that's to, I mean, we don't allow heavy coats in the class now, the high school does, I don't think the high school does, but junior high, old school, we do not allow heavy coats in the classroom.
They don't allow letterman jackets in class?
Dr. Callen up here.
Dr. Callen?
Yes.
Could you-
Presently, do you allow letterman jackets in class?
Yes, sir.
Do you allow heavy coats?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am. We have so many kids who go in and out all day long and back and forth to Career Technology Center and all in and out constantly, that we have, we have done that. Plus lockers at the high school, with the time they put the big book bags in them, sometimes almost impossible to get the jackets in the lockers. So we have done that, and that really hasn't been problematic for us.
Well, the issue with that then becomes, what heavy coats have you seen that don't have hoods? You know, that gets back to the issue of the hoodies.
Well, we're, we're discussing-
Well, I'm just saying.
Yep.
Okay, proceed. Okay, alright.
So is anyone making a motion to change seven?
Are you?
No.
Well, the way it stands, the way it's written, anything goes related to those items. So if they wanna wear their, you know, Panama City Beach Party sweater, they can. Yeah.
Would it be better if that read solid color?
Okay. The amendment then is to add the words solid colored?
Second.
At the beginning? Should we, should we leave jackets out of that, though?
Yeah.
Strike zippered jackets. Don, would you amend your amendment to s- to strike zippered jackets?
Okay.
What about solid colored would need to have no graphics on it, right? Cause it's stating sweatshirts or pullovers, so I mean, you can't have stuff going, right? Solid colored sweatshirt could have a peace symbol on the front of it or-
Could you just simply add, except those central themed or, or, uh, school, except, except with school approved logos?
School approved logo. Solid covered plain, except with school approved logo.
So you can't wear a St. Louis Cardinals?
Well, there are approved days that the principal says, we're not root for Cardinals today.
Yeah, on Cardinals Day, you could.
What about makers logos? What about makers clothing logos?
Brent. Um, solid colored vests, sweaters, v-neck sweaters, sweatshirts, pullover, and pullovers are permitted. Except those with school approved.
Not except.
Not except.
Oh. Sorry. How's it state? Solid colored vest sweaters, v-neck sweaters, sweatshirts and pullovers are permitted. But must have a solid colored shirt or turtleneck worn underneath.
That should, I think, be changed to must have a, an approved shirt underneath.
Well, would you wanna add the language that we said on number three? Brand name logos are permitted if they're an inch and a half or smaller? Or, or make it like a shirt?
Couldn't you just say approved shirt and then we include all those?
Yeah.
Where are we? Who's, who's amendment is this? Don.
Don's.
Step up, man.
They're still revising it where we are right now.
Okay. I, I think, uh, yeah, it doesn't make, if, if we're allowing up top, you know, shirts to have, um, district logos and graphics, brand name logos of a certain size, um, and, and, and spirit wear, right? I mean, like Tony was saying earlier, but we've got tons of central sweatshirts, just like tee shirts. Hmm?
Many of them do.
So you're not, okay. Okay, so this is, this is your-
Would you wanna add the same allowances that we allowed under the outer shirts, the, the main shirts with the makers' labels and whatnot?
Would that come under approved?
No, no, we're talking, not talking about the undershirt, we're talking about the vests and sweaters and-
Overwear.
All that.
So, is the amendment what, what you want?
Yeah, wasn't that already covered, Don?
No, it's a separate article of clothing.
Okay, the amendment reads-
I know, but it says visible, didn't it? Or how do we change that?
No, you're not, you're not following. Go back up to the, the allowances that we've made under shirts regarding the makers' logos.
Yeah, so wouldn't logos fit into this category? If it's an item, if it's clothing, we allow logos, right?
Or graphics, right.
Okay, alright, got it.
So, please-
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest we add that.
So if it's visible and it has a logo on it, then-
Okay.
So I would have been that to, to add the verbiage from number three to-
No, you don't have to.
What?
Because that's not, that's not applying the logo with the brand name to any particular item.
It's fine. Right. Right.
It's just saying a shirt or a top. So if it's a sweater or a v-neck vest or whatever, and it has a logo on it, it's allowed.
Okay.
This doesn't say, number three doesn't specifically say collared shirt or tee shirt, it's saying logos. It's addressing logos.
Gotcha, I see.
So you don't have to carry it over to another item.
I got it. Right. Got it, okay. So the amendment is as stated there. Any more discussion?
It's good the way it is.
Stay with us, Phil.
I'm with you.
Or number seven.
All those in favor of the amendment? I'm sorry?
I need somebody to add that and make sure that, okay, cause I can't just do like that.
Okay.
A motion to amend by adding the word solid colored.
Yes, and striking-
And striking zippered jackets.
Mm-hmm.
And striking solid colored collared shirt or turtleneck and adding approved shirt.
And approved shirt, yes.
Question, jackets aren't addressed.
It states. And must have an approved shirt underneath, so... I know people that wear sweaters that are cotton sweaters and they don't wear shirts underneath, so this is saying they have to have it or no. They have to have a shirt underneath.
It says it must have.
It says it must have.
Um-
Just assume they have it.
If you wear, if you wear a shirt underneath that has to be approved.
So, so should they, and may have?
No.
And if a shirt is worn underneath, it has to be approved shirts.
If a shirt is worn underneath, it must be an approved shirt. Well, I'm thinking, especially girls, uh, wear sweaters that, that, um-
Yeah, nice cotton sweater.
Yeah, that, that may not have a shirt underneath. Sorry? Well, that's true.
And I think that was their intent was to-
Yeah, that's regarding a v-neck or a vest with, without sleeves. That's true.
We need to take out v-neck sweaters.
Well, they're allowed, though. And, and it, you know, to, then what happens when the, the little kid wants to, doesn't wanna wear the sweater that his mom made him wear out the door? And-
What's the depth of a V? How, how far down can a V go?
Oh, let's not talk about that.
I'm just saying, a v-neck sweater, now my V is bigger than your V. I'm just saying, that, that's-
I think that's why they added, Carla, please correct the wrong, they, they added, they must have a shirt underneath.
Why don't you just take out v-neck sweaters?
Why aren't they, you, you don't want them allowed?
I'm not worried about that.
Well, what's wrong with wearing a v-neck sweater as long as you have an approved shirt underneath it?
An approved colored shirt underneath it?
Whose amendment was this?
I, I think I did years ago.
Originally, a v-neck sweater would have had a collared shirt underneath of it.
Originally?
Originally.
People wear tee shirts underneath them.
Originally, the way this policy was written, a v-neck sweater would have a collared shirt underneath of it.
Yes. Or turtleneck.
So you didn't have an issue with how big a V on a v-neck shirt was.
Right. Right.
Now that we went to a tee shirt or whatever, then, or no shirt, now. And you could have someone wear a v-neck sweater with no shirt underneath of it and-
Well, as it, as it states now, it must have an a shirt, you must have an approved shirt.
Must, but we were looking at may.
And you must have an approved shirt underneath the sweatshirt, too. So don't wear a sweatshirt without an approved shirt.
Doesn't have to be an approved shirt, I can wear a solid colored shirt underneath it. Right?
I'm just saying, it must have an approved shirt under it, so you can't wear a sweatshirt without an approved shirt under it. Even if you're not planning on taking off your sweatshirt, you have to have an approved shirt under it.
Which could be a tee shirt.
Okay.
Okay, wait.
So, you can't wear a sweater without a T-shirt, without a shirt underneath of it, which was what your question was, Kyle.
That's what we're saying here.
Some sweats, sweaters, you wouldn't wear a shirt under, but you have to.
Mm-hmm.
What sweaters would you, what sweaters would you wear without a shirt on?
I have cotton sweaters on.
Yeah.
T-shirts, I guess, I guess so.
Any more discussion on that? All right, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Denika and Paul? Motion carries.
Try to mix them up here.
Number eight. Hoodies. Any discussions on number eight? What about number nine?
Wait, eight, didn't we say that they wore outdoor jackets in the classroom, that they don't allow hooded jackets? Is that...
Dr. Callen? Could you?
Let's get his workout.
It's spinned out a little bit up front, you could just stay...
You're saying you wear outdoor jackets in the classroom, but you don't allow hooded outdoor jackets? A winter jacket with a hood could not be worn in the classroom, or it is allowed?
It is, we do that.
You allow that?
Yeah. Again, it's the issue of, we have hundreds of kids, literally, going back and forth from CTC all day long, particularly during the winter months, not to mention other places.
So, do you allow hooded sweatshirts, too?
Yeah, we have the hoods, the hoods, not with the hoods on, maybe with that, but, yeah.
So... That's what, is that what eight meant, no hoods, you can't wear the hoods in the classroom?
Well, no, they're saying in eight that they can't wear those in the classroom at all.
Hoodies and hooded jackets are not permitted in the classroom, is what eight says. That's why I'm clarifying that.
Instead of prohibiting what they can't wear, why don't you just say, if it's got a hood on it, don't put it, you can't put it up?
We, we have a headwear thing, some accessories, right?
And then, I mean, if, by saying that...
That's why I was just clarifying eight, because it sounds...
If you say they're wearing something that has a hood on it, you can't...
Okay.
I second.
Beth, did you catch that? Okay.
Move, we strike number eight.
Already done.
Already did that.
And seconded. Discussion then about striking number eight in its entirety?
So, is that the only place that it addresses hoodies in the classroom? So, now you can wear it in the classroom, you can't wear it out?
To be honest, I'm, I'm... I, I've, a few teachers have told me that, um... I know there's widely different opinions about this, but, um, you know, regarding hooded, kids putting their hoods up, they just make it clear, put it down, or they walk behind them and snatch it down, and it seems like a classroom control issue.
I'm not saying, I'm clarifying that we don't have it anywhere else in the document. Is that the only place that hoodies are addressed?
Yeah, yes.
Secrets.
Okay. Any more discussion then about the amendment?
By striking that, are we then allowing hoodies to be worn?
Yep.
Yes.
So, do we need to go back to number one, and the type of shirts that can be worn and include hoodies with sweatshirts? Because we did put, in one of the amended ones...
Oh, you're right.
Not hooded.
That's why, that's why I was thinking, I thought we had talked about that somewhere.
Well, if we, if we approve the amendment, we would, yes, want to go back. Let's, uh, let's look at number eight, though. Uh, any more discussion about striking number, about the amendment, to strike number eight?
I would add that if an article of clothing has a hood on it, the hood cannot be worn up inside the building.
You'd rather do that? You'd rather strike that and take care of it later?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor then of the amendment to strike all the verbiage in number eight? Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries.
Move to strike...
Yeah, go ahead.
Move to strike the wording about hoods in item article one.
Second.
Discussion?
Do we need to add then, after sweatshirts, crew neck and hoodies? So, there's no question that both are permitted?
I don't, I don't think that's necessary.
Or sweatshirts in general? Cover both?
Any more discussion?
I just think when I read sweatshirts, I think of a crew neck. So, if we had an approved T-shirts, comma, sweatshirts, comma, and hoodies? It's a school oriented hoodie.
That mean like, like central, like the track team wears, making...
Right.
So, uh, all right, the amendment then is to...
To put school oriented and approved T-shirts, comma, sweatshirts, comma, and hoodies.
Okay. Discussion there? Has this been seconded, I'm sorry? Well, no, it's, 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 it's another, it's an additional amendment. Unless you agree to, it's fine, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
I seconded Tony's, and then we went in discussion, and then I amended it.
Well, he's going to accept your...
Accepting it to make it his amendment.
Great, okay. So, the amendment reads then, uh, as, as stated up there. School oriented and approved, approved T-shirts, sweatshirts, and hoodies are also permitted. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We strike number eight, correct?
Yes.
What about number nine? Sorry?
We eliminated in number seven, we eliminated zipper jackets. Do we not need to add that back in somewhere?
You know, in my mind, that's what a pullover is, but maybe I'm wrong.
I, I think it's outerwear, and that's not addressed at all. I mean, it's...
Anything about number nine?
I would pause and ask the question at this point in time, just for, uh, the interest of knowing if, if our committee chair finds anything that we've done so far ambiguous.
Right. I, I tend to disagree. I guess I, I see these points as, as being some, much more clear to apparent as, about what is allowed, specifically, what isn't allowed, whereas our, our current policy doesn't say anything about that.
I think if you compare it to our current policy, absolutely is better.
Right.
But I, I think it's getting away from the whole purpose of why we wanted to go to a uniform, was to change the school climate and form a community in a sense of belonging, and, and now, pretty much can vary.
Well, it's not whatever. There's, I, I suspect there'll be a lot of kids running around in, you know, tiger orange T-shirts and sweatshirts instead of the stupid collared shirts their mom made them buy. I was using a, a child's perspective. I like collared shirts, I wear them all the time.
Before we go to pants and bottoms, we need to go back and look at number two. Because a school oriented T-shirt, sweatshirt, or hoodie is not going to be solid in color.
Well...
So, I think we need to make, we need to make that collared shirts must be solid in color, right?
Well, but we're allowing in other places a, a logo or graphic.
Then do we need to strike number two altogether?
No, well, unless you think we should allow plaids and stripes and everything else.
No, that's why, I just think, if you have a central hoodie on, yes, it may be orange, but it may also have black and white, so it's not solid because of the graphic. Do you see what I'm saying? So, I didn't know if we want to, to clarify that.
It's approved spirit wear, right?
Right.
But I think this is talking more about collared...
Collared shirt, that's why I'm saying, should we add that collared shirts must be solid in color? So that we know the collared shirt can't be striped or plaid.
If it's, uh, if it's a... I've got a Central Tigers rugby, collared rugby, that's orange, that has big white stripes on the sleeves, and I think we've already said that's probably, I mean, it's a school spirit wear.
So, what's number two referring to?
Well, yeah, I don't know.
If we've made...
Or must meet spirit wear requirements. Addressed wherever else it's addressed, I don't, where, where else was that, where else is that addressed?
Can you move it up where we can see number one?
Well, two's written in the premise that it was just a solid colored, collared shirt.
I'll tell you what, why don't we take, the shirts must be solid color, collared, just move that whole thing into number one?
Mm-hmm, where shirts shall be collared in solid color.
Yeah.
I move that we move number two into number one to reach shirts shall be collared and in a solid color. And then we probably should also add turtleneck shirts in a solid color are permitted. Someone want to second that?
Second.
Discussion there?
Well, you can take, you can take the turtleneck off, because number six is already...
We're, we're kind of, we're done.
Yes. Striking number two and adding the...
Which also means we can strike number six, because we're just reiterating what's said in number one. Oh, no, but, well, but number six is saying worn under a colored shirt.
Just put shirts shall be collared in a, in, in a solid color.
Designed, and, and then add solid colored turtlenecks? Or, sorry, you added it already.
Number six is already on there.
Okay? More discussion there?
I don't think we shouldn't use the number six, because it's referring to being worn under a colored shirt. No, that's, that's my motion, I guess.
You're wanting to remove number two and put in a solid color.
In number one.
Number one.
Mm-hmm. That's what she, that's what she's done.
Uh, okay, any more discussion there?
That's what I said, yes. That's what you said.
Okay. All in favor then of approving the amendment? Yes. It, it doesn't specify a color.
Any solid color?
We're looking at number one, right?
Yes.
First, first in.
Do we want it to read in any solid color? Or it's just, we okay with that? I mean, it would, it would keep somebody from calling the school and saying, what's this, what color are you referring to if we put in any solid color?
So, strike A and add any?
Yes.
It's your amendment.
I move to put in any solid color. Shirts shall be collared and in any solid color, diamond button at the neck, and shorter long sleeve, but no more than the top button, or maybe turtleneck shirts in any solid color are permitted.
In the turtleneck part. Okay?
Yes.
All right?
Thank you.
That's how it stands? Any more discussion? Uh, all right, all in favor then of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, amendment carries. We are back to number nine. Is there discussion there?
Nope.
Okay. Um, I would move to add one more point under shirts, tops, um, to state that solid colored dresses are permitted and must have sleeves and a collar or high crew neck.
What's a high crew neck? Is what I have on a high crew neck?
We think so.
I was just trying to see what a high crew neck was.
Solid colored dresses are permitted?
I, I wouldn't know, I...
With sleeves, and, and must have sleeves and a collar or high crew neck?
Long sleeves, cap sleeves?
Just sleeves.
That eliminates spaghetti straps and sundresses and...
Just gotta have sleeves? It must have, must have sleeves and a collar or high crew neck? I'm, I'm thinking specifically of, of little girls. There may, I may, I, I don't want to introduce an issue, say, with high school age that I'm unaware of.
Teresa, you've got it.
Well, and it does, that means it doesn't allow a V-neck dress.
Right.
No, I think that's...
And I'm anticipating in the pants and bottoms to include the language about dresses, about the length, the hem length.
And also... Does it mo, does it mention anywhere that if a skirt or dress is worn, leggings have to be worn under them?
Um, i- if this passes, I would suggest that later in the pants and bottoms. Is there a second? Did somebody second that?
Second.
Question?
So, you think the leggings would go down in pants and bottoms and not with the dress?
First, I think it's under accessories, it talks about that. Well, that's talked about in, in the pants and bottoms, the hem length, so I thought I'd...
Had you talked about these, about dresses?
Jumpers.
I, yeah, I thought if, if shorts, skirts, jumpers, and squirts, culottes are not added, but I don't know if that's a, you know... I'm all pushed for culottes right now. Okay, any other discussion on that addition? Okay. All in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Um, does anyone, would anyone care for a five minute break?
What color? Solid color, or?
Anyone? Great, okay, let's, let's break for five minutes. Okay, I'd like to get back in order here. We're seeing a few.
Hike downstairs.
Missing one, uh... Missing Paul. Is somebody in the hallway? No. Okay. We can resume with pants and bottoms. Number one, any discussion on that one?
I would move to allow jeans.
Second.
So, the, the wording would be to add, uh, jeans are also permitted?
Yes.
Okay, at the very end?
Yes.
Seconded by Denika, discussion?
Where are you going to discuss types of jeans? I was asking, where would you discuss the types of jeans allowed?
Some of that's covered in number two. Is...
Rips or pairs or...
Well, that's covered in number one, general, no holes, cuts, tears.
So, we need to put a color designation on jeans?
Solid. You want all the two toning and striping and dotting and... You want all the two-toning and striped and dotting and-
It's already in there.
Solid colored pants.
Solid colored jeans, pants, shorts, capris, skirts, squorts and jumpers are permitted. Blue, solid, solid, nah.
Solid colors meaning more like striped, plaid, that kind of thing.
But the second sentence says colors will be limited to khaki, black and navy.
I have a question for you. The amendment to number one has been to also allow jeans under pants, um, and, and I know you've spoken to me about your concern about that, would you mind sharing?
And I've worn jeans all my life, but what we will do is, again, we're creating subjectivity with that. Uh, the jeans nowadays aren't our father's jeans, you know, we used to all wear Levi's and bootcut, we all knew what jeans meant. But right now with the oversized and the sagging, or the skinny cut jeans, or the evolution of my young gentleman wearing young ladies jeans, uh, it's become increasingly difficult.
No kidding?
Is that really true?
Yeah, it's true.
And in junior high also?
Uh, not sure about junior high, I can't, but-
Miss Fee's right there.
Oh, jeggings and leggings, yeah, I forget about those, I'm still used to those. So that would be a factor, you know, certainly for us, and that we, we battle that all day, every single day, in one way. And it goes from one extreme to the other, uh, from that, from those-
Way too big to way too small.
We've already dressed them.
And they buy them, and when you, you know, when we bring them in and give them the belt loops, or give them the tie-ups or whatsoever, and it's phenomenal when you do that because they're about three and four and five sizes way too big, and that's the way to buy them. If indeed they are in the sagging, now, if you go the other direction, uh, where you can't even get into jeans, that creates another problem because it's a little hard to get the, um, jean totally over the anatomy, when there's not enough material there to cover the anatomy, uh, in the first place, so.
And those would, conceivably, you can have that situation, but, and still have the jeans as the right size.
Yes, yes, conceivably, yes, conceivably, you could-
That they are designed to-
You are, yes, you are by one of the, uh, I guess the winds of fashion that make you see that happening.
Trying to assess how big of a problem that would be in the ju, I, I'm assuming if there's a problem, that it's larger in the junior high and senior high, but how?
I'm, I'm the candidate that I can speak to the other grade levels, uh, other than just the, the high schools, but it is, uh, it's a daily problem there. So, no, I feel very strongly about that, that we should not go to jeans, the jean route, we would do that on these early days, the dress nowadays.
That was my question, would you allow, would you have those special days where blue jeans would be a treat then?
Sure. And you would do that on those days where you would-
That's stated under spirit wear, the section.
And, uh, and not only would be allowed, I probably would too, uh, you know, on those days, but day in and day out. So we would be, be a significant loss for us if we, if we go to the jeans. But, uh, to be honest, there have been several significant losses, you know, this evening, so I don't, I, I really would encourage us not to do that. But I understand that we don't, we don't make it work by wearing them.
Thank you. Any other discussion regarding the amendment?
I would agree that jeans takes away, I mean, it, it does open up a lot, I mean, we, we've opened up enough issues with some of the things we've done. Jeans opens up, uh, another whole entire Pandora's box.
It sounds like it to me.
Well, my only thing there is that it seems like that any of the fit issues that we're talking about can be done, can be an issue with any kind of other kind of pants that, that they wear. I don't think we're limiting that issue at all.
Well, I, I, I'm just going by my experience in going into a store with my own kids. You might see twelve different styles of jeans, but a, a very small number of different styles of khakis or whatever. I mean, I, I agree with, uh, Dr. Cowan in that, I, I, you know, jeans have evolved. The, the diversity in the, in the kinds of jeans you can get now, even to the point of what are called jeggings, um-
The khakis are available in the jeggings as well. Khakis are available for the guys in the skinny jean that look like a girl's pant that they can wear.
I just-
There they, well, we're not seeing them because they're wearing jeans. But if we do away with jeans, then that's what they're going to. They're out there.
Well, that would-
So what I'm saying is, I think we're gonna see the same issues. We're just not seeing it now because they're wearing jeans.
But wouldn't that then be addressed down the road, if that became a problem also, like some are suggesting it is now?
Well, I don't know, but I think if we enforce the jeans and we put in here jeans are wa, to be worn at the waist, we've already got the shirts to be tucked in, which helps with the sagging issue, I think, and then if it's enforced, just like with any of the rest of this.
I guess I'm concerned about what I've heard from our administrators in terms of the subjectivity regarding particularly the pants, the jeans, um, of what's too low, you know, when, when a kid comes into the office and, uh, said, you know, her, his or her parents bought those jeans for them, and then they're wearing them, I, I, there's, there's not going to be a whole lot of support from parents, um, if they've already spent thirty, fifty, a hundred bucks.
And I'm just assessing the case whether it's jeans or it's khakis.
I'm, I'm guessing that's, it'd be a lot less of a problem though, with khakis. No, we don't know that, um, I mean, we don't know, can't guarantee any of this, and I, I suspect that kids would be very, uh, experimental.
Actually talking to a gentleman who came out of a city school system and works in our high school now, said that they tried to do the same thing by eliminating jeans and going to khaki pants. And then it became, okay, which gang or clique could come up with the next cool way to wear khakis? So then they were, you know, doing the low riding, you know. So, I mean, Danica's right, I mean, they're gonna come up with way, but, I mean, that's what kids do, they push the envelope, so, just, I guess it's our job to figure out how much we're gonna let them push it. Or what restrictions you put on it.
To me, number four, shirts and tops covers the problem. Shirts and tops, shirt, tops and paint bottoms must overlap at all times. So you don't do that, then you're in violation?
Well.
It's still my amendment, right?
Yes.
Please put blue jeans under the word jeans, or before the word jean.
Is, is Ms. Scheller still here?
Three jeans outside.
Oh. Well, I mean, she, she deals a lot with the, uh, the students in the, in the office as well, doesn't she? Perhaps more than, more than you or not, or can you, uh, is, it's, is it worth talking to her about the problems she deals with on a daily basis with jeans? Or, or is it your same experience?
Well, let me ask the question, are the fit issue that, that is already subjective on, on pretty much everything else we've dealt with here, but we've tried to deal with by saying properly sized, and again, uh, you know, I hadn't heard jeggings in my life until we started talking about this policy. Can we not deal with this the same way as we're dealing with all of the other clothing with, with a, with a sentence regarding fit? Or disallowing specific types of thing? Do we, do we, is there something in here where we're disallowing jeggings already?
Number two, we're first to low-rise hip hug and tight fitting.
Well, I, I, I would say, under accessories, when it talks about tights or leggings maybe worn under certain things, I, I was planning to add jeggings in that category.
Well, number two, yeah, I, I didn't read far enough ahead here, number two. Stretchy, low-rise, tight-fitting.
Sagging.
Sagging, I mean, that's covered under there. I, I don't, if you come, I don't care if they're meant to be worn that way, if you come to school and there, and I can see every crease in your body, probably it's, you shouldn't be wearing it. The part, regardless of whether it's tan and it's twill or it's denim, it's, you know, that, that just-
Could, could some of our principals talk to the issue of enforcing that, point number two? If, if blue jeans are allowed and point number two, uh, is stated the way it is, uh, which, um, says that low-rise, hip hugger, tight-fitting, sagging, stretchy, blah, blah, blah pants are not permitted, um, and then, you know, we were to, well, if, if we, uh, go with the enforcement or the discipline, you know, points here, um, what kind of situation would you be having weekly? Or do you think that would be in, if, if we make the point that, hey, we are ser, you, you are allowed to wear jeans, but number two states what you cannot wear in your jeans, um, would that-
The, the, the difference I think, Stacy, is really going to be the, just the wide variety of cuts of jeans. Now, now, Danica makes a valid point, I think you can see some of that in, uh, what we were calling khakis or dickies or whatever we're calling, or whatever brand it is of the moment, that's it, but in, in general, there's more of a standard, more of a dress cut, uh, with those in what you're gonna find in jeans. Jeans are just going so, such a wide variety right now, and we're going to have enforcement issues whatever we do. Uh, that's, that's just the nature of the beast, uh, that's, that's certainly the case, uh, we understand that. But the whole intent here has been try to pull in, uh, the parameters of subjectivity. Uh, that's, that's been my number one, uh, goal, uh, through this whole process. And this is a way of losing that even more so, uh, if that's the case. But, uh, Danica's right, there, you know, you can find the other pants being cut to that style too, probably not to as wide a degree of variety yet, it may come depending on the winds of fashion yet again.
And with all due respect to what you just said, I think this is still drawn in the parameters to what we have. It's loosening it from what the dress code committee proposed. But I still think from what we currently have in effect, this is still tightening the reins because it's being very specific on how we expect blue jeans to be worn. With that, it, it specifically is stating no, no tight fit, no sagging. It's in there, so where if they doing it, then they are in violation, our dress code does not state that right now.
Well, we're getting away from the spirit days where they were going to allow blue jeans on those days. I, I don't see any need for having any spirit days or, or rewards for doing this or anything like that because almost everything that was going to be allowed under the spirit days, we're going to allow now. I just, I just disagree.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, um, all in favor of approving the amendment to number one under pants, please say aye.
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 Who? Four, all those opposed, please say nay.
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 Uh, amendment passes four to three. Number two? Question there, number three? Number four? I would add, uh, the words behind shorts, skirts, add dresses.
Second.
Dresses, jumpers and squorts. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. Number five?
I would add the same limiting criteria on makers' labels that we've used in prior, um, prior amended items.
Well, so, but what it seems like this is saying is that there's, um, a, aside from labels, there's no pocket design that's so prevalent right now.
And, and this is a tough area because I, you know, even Wranglers have a little D, okay?
Levi's?
Yeah, yeah, Wrangler's are W, right? That doesn't say, well. I think the way that Scott City addressed jeans was they just said plain, solid color, no discoloration, plain pocket jeans. That eliminates all your hip, hip and this, that, and the oversized, big pockets and stitching going eighteen directions, and it's just a plain four-pocket jean.
Where do you buy plain pocket jeans?
I'm sure there's a lot of places, because everyone would go into Scott City wearing plain four-pocket jeans.
Where? American Eagle?
Absolutely.
No need to be sassy, I'm asking, I really haven't seen any. I, I do have a pair, but I, I ordered them, I had to look hard.
When you say plain pocket, are you talking about not even like the Wrangler stitching? Are we talking about getting rid of all embellishment?
I, I think if, if we pass this, since we are now allowing jeans, I think we are creating an additional hardship on people who are not going to be able to wear most, a huge majority of the jeans they now have, or they'll get in trouble. Because most of the jeans that kids wear have stuff on them, on the pockets. And I, I find it crazy to tell people, oh, you can wear jeans, but you have to go buy five new pair because yours have something on the back of them. I mean, I'll be clear, I, I, I didn't want to have jeans anyway, but if we are-
I move that we strike number five.
I have a second. But we're still, we were- Well, we, you initially had-
That's done and gone.
Number four, we added dresses.
Was it anybody second your motion to add the wording?
Oh, I, I, I withdraw.
Okay.
There was no second.
Okay, so the, the amendment is to strike number five.
So we're gonna allow e- everything on blue jeans?
Well, I, I don't know how-
Add the bell bottoms with the-
Well, no.
Well, listen- Well, forget the, forget the jeans for a minute, finding tan pants without any kind of maker label is gonna be next to impossible unless you go to the uniform shop.
Well, maker label's one thing, but if you're talking about jewels and bling and, you know, shizzizzle or dizzle or whatever that thing is. Huh?
Pearls.
Well, well, okay, so create something that, that speaks to that and says that, I'm all for that.
I just said, what Scott City does is plain pocket jeans. If you want to wear jeans, go out and buy some plain jeans. If you don't have any plain jeans, then wear khakis.
Wear dresses.
Any other discussion?
Well, so what's on the table, striking number five?
Striking number five. Yeah, uh, I did.
I move Stacy.
Oh, you did before Paul did.
Going down a path here.
I would, I would be for allowing the logo or the label, but not all the rivets and-
Well, but, or, or do we want to put our principals in the position of being the rivet embellishment police, I mean?
Make them into every other police, why not this?
Well, no, we haven't.
Yes, we have.
No, we haven't.
This document will be difficult to enforce.
I disagree, I just asked if it were ambiguous, and Ms. Fee said it would not be, I mean, it is not. That was my point, we're asking. To make sure that what we're doing is not creating additional effort on their part, it's, it's just, it's to help and, and keep the policy within the spirit of what we're trying to do to elevate our standards, create a, a more sense of, of community, but still help our parents comply without too much hardship. And I think it's important to ask, and we gotta keep going here to, to, to do something. And I think for them not to be able to buy, wear a standard pair of Wranglers or a standard pair of Levi's is criminal. And, and we, we ought to be able to find out a way to, figure out a way to do that here. If we're gonna allow jeans, which we've always said, already said we were, or, or at least that in, in, in the, the draft policy.
I don't think a brand name logo is the issue, is it?
Is the stitch, does the Wrangler stitching prohibited? You said plain pocket, but if you say plain pocket, that is, does not allow Wrangler stitching on the, on the pocket.
Or Levi's.
Or Levi's, or Lee, or whatever.
Now, there, there, a lot of jeans are.
Well, that's a simple stitching, that's a simple stitching.
Yeah, but do we want, I mean, what's the big deal about stitching?
Well, now.
It's the other end of the spectrum, that's what I'm saying, it's when you start getting jewels and bling and the.
Where they're embroidered all the way down the legs?
Yeah, and, and all that stuff, that's, that's what you're wanting to get away from.
How do you say that?
Well, again, and then, and then they have to enforce it.
Well, I don't, I mean.
Just like the shirts.
I heard our principals expressing concern about the, the jeans in general.
Jeans in a period, yes.
Um, I mean, uh, can you all speak to, it, it, jeans are apparently allowed? Um, is there a huge problem with?
We haven't passed the policy yet, we're just working on the template.
Well, yeah, but, but I'm saying, if, if, if jeans are allowed, um, i- is there a huge issue about allowing stitching on the back pockets at this point?
I think at this point, no.
I agree, Carl, at this point, no. So that's not good, because trying to find how much stitching and how much too much stitching and else too no stitching, and anything that's extreme, uh, we're just have to address, is what you're saying.
Any other discussion?
You could just apply the same standard we do to the shirts.
Well.
Brand name logo.
But, I mean, like Levi's have, have a little, you know, red tag on the pocket, that's their logo, but then there's stitching on the pockets also, or Wranglers, you know, have a little.
That's part of their logo.
Well, I think you could probably say that about anything, and the, wouldn't the, couldn't the kids say, the stitching is just part of the logo, I mean, what?
Some of the brands are.
Yeah, Miss Mean Jeans, you're gonna have embellishments on the pockets.
So you're gonna have bling and everything else on there too?
Well, I mean, do we wanna put our principals in the situation of saying, I'm sorry, honey, your jeans are just a little too shiny?
Well, you're gonna have some that can afford the blue jeans with that, and some that can't, and you're right back where you started from. What's, what's the sense of community in that?
I, I, it seems to me like the larger issue was jeans in general. And I, I, I'm struck by the fact that when I pull, pull up to the high school and I see a hundred kids waiting to leave, you know, or whatever, um, ninety-nine of them have jeans on, which, which tells me that, um, it, it, it just seems silly to me to say, okay, jeans are allowed, but basically everyone's gonna probably have to get new pairs if they have any kind of stitching on them, because those don't work anymore.
They're gonna have to get some.
We're not talking about stitching, I, I didn't say stitching, I, I said the blings and the.
Well, but how do you differentiate that?
It's all kinda tied together.
Well, you buy them without it. You can buy jeans with the stitching, but without the, the flashy emblems and things like that, can't you? And that's what you said they did at Scott City? I don't, I don't think they're.
Yeah, but I think what the administrators were saying at this point, if jeans are in, to try and, to try and police the bling, it's gonna be.
No, I think they said. You said stitching. They ain't saying anything about the bling, they said about the stitching on the pockets and all that.
Well, I, I, I think on what, we'll just have to address that as we do now, anything that's extreme, uh, we'll just have to do that. Once we go over the door, we go over the door, so, uh, we just have to address the extreme situation. Yeah, for the pressure of your time tonight, you know, it's annoying, you have to use common sense and a balanced approach, and you have to hold them in bridge. This is what we provided you with.
Any more discussion on the amendment, then?
Is it ever an issue where stitching and things on pockets is an issue, I mean?
Not enough stitching, uh, it's.
Cause it's more, it's more the fitting of the clothes that's issue rather than.
You're dealing with, that's there, the stitching, of course, you can get all kinds of jeans at this day and time with the designs on them, and, and, uh, they're, they're quite artistic, uh, from there. Anything that is metal, obviously, that's going to be extending from the jean or likely to catch on something or another person or something like that, we're gonna have to address, but we do that now.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor then of the amendment to strike number five, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
No.
No.
Phil? Amendment passes. Um, I have a question about jeans and everything else that we're doing tonight, um, from Dr. Welker to principals or whatever, uh, two things. One, um. Is there some language in here? Well, yeah, in the, in the, in the, on the first page, on the very first part of the introductory kind of thing, it said, "School administration will determine the appropriateness or inappropriateness of the style, manner and fit in which clothing is worn by students." Um, so I guess I'm, one, I'm, I'm wondering, um, just as, as there was an issue uh, at the junior high in which the principal, uh, made the decision to disallow some clothing that was deemed inappropriate, um, you know, if there are problems, um, throughout the school year, what, what latitude do we, do we give principals, um?
Well, there's, there's another paragraph, I think, where did you read?
Superintendent or designee is directed to create administrative procedures necessary to implement this policy to define the dress requirements in more detail and to delineate any exceptions to this dress requirement.
That was a recommendation by MSBA to put in there.
Mm-hmm.
School administration will determine appropriateness or inappropriate, inappropriateness of style, manner and fit.
So I, I guess what I'm wondering is, um, given that there's been so much discussion about this whole thing, and, and jeans has been a major, you know, point of contention, um. One, is it, is it fair to, to state to the, to our students and to the community as a whole that this is something where we've looked into, we will continue to look into, and, and if it's a problem, we can certainly rea- readdress this, this question. Uh, I mean, is it particularly of jeans, you know, if, if, if they're, I, I'll be interested in hearing next school year, you know, maybe this time, how this is all going, um, and, and what?
Well, I, I certainly think that's, that's a possibility, I, as, as we work as administrative staff in terms of dealing with issues, that there's always a possibility that we'll need to revisit some of this.
And, and if we approve the wording in the beginning here, it does give administrators some leeway. If, if there's proven to be a consistent problem, you all are allowed to make.
Right.
Decisions.
I do know as far as blue jeans, that several schools that were discussed in the committee's presentations, that they started off not allowing blue jeans, and by the time it was done, they had either passed it with no blue jeans, and then the following year they allowed it, or they rewrote it to allow blue jeans in the final draft, so, including Scott City.
Dr. Callen, do you envision being able to state that boys are not allowed to wear girls' tight jeans?
Yes, ma'am.
That's a disturbing.
I deserve to add, uh, I would, I would add to the conversation, I have already been saying that, and so we, we do fight the battle. Then we will continue to do so.
Wait, wait, I have a question about that.
I have a question too.
About that?
Well, just in, in general.
When you, and this is along the scope of enforcement.
Sure.
When you address a situation like that with a student, do you get pushback from a parent when you call out their child for wearing?
Yes.
Tight girls' jeans as a?
And I say yes, Tony, we must be fair, because anytime we make these statements, we're generalizing, and as, as always, we've got a wonderful school, and we've got so many parents who will support us at anything, uh, really will, and, and that's why I continue to love being a central high school. But, uh, for those kids who choose to, uh, push the limits, uh, oftentimes we have those same conversations with the parents, because they feel like we're infringing on their rights. So, yes, sir, we go through those conversations fairly frequently.
And those questions, no matter what this policy looks like when we're finished, aren't going to quit, just because we've passed the policy?
No, sir, there's, they're, they're not going to quit completely. The whole idea, of course, from the beginning, as I've said, I don't mean to sound terribly repetitious, but yet I think it's an important point, was try to, you know, pull in the parameters of subjectivity as much as we possibly could. Uh, that would indeed allow us to communicate and therefore thrive like, uh, than what we're currently able, able to do. But no, uh, I would never want anyone to think that enforcement challenges are going to go away, even if we went to drop dead one shirt, one pair of pants, uh, uh, a uniform, uh, we would still have enforcement issues. That's the, the nature of the, of the character.
Right.
Especially for adolescents.
During the forum I attended and all the emails, and in my, as a high school principal once before, uh, it's always the other chi- the other child that's not dressing appropriately, never. If you remember at the forum, everybody stood up, said it was their child dressed appropriately, not, not, uh, everybody else's, so.
Dr. Herbst?
I would just like to say that the whole point, and I know I've said this before, the whole reason the committee was formed and we started looking at it, and one of the main issues that we were considering is, how can we make our schools more conducive to learning? And the policy, or what we, the dress code committee proposed, my biggest issue, um, the reason that I was very supportive of it was because it made it easy. It was fast, and it allowed us to get on with the business of school. And as far as enforcement goes, this is, it's gonna be difficult, because we have so many ifs, thens, and, you know, if we gotta look at this on the jeans and the whatevers. I'm not saying it's not better, but what I'm saying is, as a teacher, I'm not gonna be able to walk into a classroom and, no, are my kids ready to learn? Let's go. And you've heard me say that before, but to me, that's, that's why we're here, that's what this is all about, is we've gotta use every second we possibly can to teach our kids. And if I'm gonna have to look and evaluate as my students come in, do you have too many rhinestones on your jeans, then I'm taken away from that learning process. And so I just felt like I had to say that, cause when we get to enforcement and all that other stuff, we've got lots and lots of parameters, which I think can be very helpful for parents. By the same token, when you look at the enforcement side, it's gonna be pretty difficult. So, you know, my preference, and I think some of our preferences all along, were, let's make it easy. This is what you can wear, let's get on with the business of school.
Thanks. Did we, did we vote on number, on that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about number two? Under pants and bottoms? It says, no sweatpants, windpants? Is there going to be an exception in there for athletic jeans?
There's.
Is that in?
Well, in, in, under spirit wear, that's, that's a dress, we can, we can discuss that.
Well, it's talking about. It's talking about shirts there, it's not.
Yeah, but we can, if you wanna, you can add it, you can amend that if you want to.
This is a school uniform bottoms.
Their, their proposal was.
We were just in bottoms, and I just thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah.
Cause we don't have much of a spirit wear section left, so I'm just checking.
So where is that address?
My, spirit wear, number two, it's the only one left.
Moving on to accessories, number one? Any discussion? Number two? Number three? Number four? Did somebody want to, uh?
That's where we're gonna put the hoodies can't be.
You're add, add hoods can be worn.
You wanted to add?
Or clothing with hoods.
Well, the clothing can be worn, but the hoods can't be worn out, is what they.
Hat, cap, socks, socks.
Hoods on, I would propose.
Hoodies, I would think hoodie, hoodies up.
I'll, I'll move that we add the language at the, at the end, that.
Hoodies can be worn.
Clothing, hoodies on, hoods on clothing, on clothing may not be worn in the classroom.
Or outerwear.
Or, or in the building.
Hoods on sweatshirts or outerwear.
Or outerwear.
Maybe.
Yeah, hoods on sweatshirt or outerwear.
Hoods on clothing, what, what is in that?
Yeah.
May not be worn.
Hoods on clothing slash jackets.
May not be worn up?
Well, you've already got shall not be worn to class or within the school building, so you're just gonna put that portion in.
Hoods on clothing may not be worn inside the.
It's already there, it's already in the sentence.
Just need to add the beginning.
The very last part of four, you're just inserting.
Oh.
Visors, sunglasses, comma, hoods.
Oh, I see. Hoods on clothing.
Or outerwear.
Or other similar, right, I understand.
Comma, or, or other similar head cover.
Then you're saying they can't be worn to class, and they can be worn to class, they just can't be worn on the head.
On the head, no, this is talking about headwear.
Think you need a separate line.
Make it a separate line?
Just saying, if, if an item has a hood on it, it cannot be worn up in the building.
Okay, so add at the very end of number four, hoods on clothing may not be worn.
In the building.
In the building.
Up.
Over the head.
May, may not be worn over the head in the building.
Correct.
Is that clear enough to parents, children? Is there a second?
Second.
Hoods on clothing may not be worn over the head in the building. Discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Number five? Number six? I would, uh, like to add several words here, so that the, number six states, solid colored tights, comma, leggings, comma, or jeggings may only.